Okay, we're ready, Michelle.
Thank you, Judge.
Live from El Paso County, Texas, the Veterans' capital of the USA. From inside to the Alicia Chacon Commissioner's courtroom of the Enrique Moreno County Courthouse, you are watching the El Paso County Commissioners Court meeting.
Good morning. Today is Monday, June 16th, 2025. Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. We are joined today by ASL interpreters Selena Salum and Tamara Marcus. Commissioner Ogden, would you like to announce our Pledge of Allegiance for us?
Good morning, everyone. So today I am honored to introduce our newest intern for the summer at the Precinct 3 office, Viana, if you could come up to the podium. She, today is her first day. She was at HR this morning, that's why we had to wait a little bit on her. But she'll be leading us in the pledge. And just a little bit about her, she is getting ready to start her final year at St. Mary's University this coming fall semester. So congratulations and welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty with justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next item is the invocation. This morning, we are joined by Keith Giles, representing Join Us for Justice, the El Paso chapter of Americans United.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to bring this morning's invocation. There's an old African proverb that says, "If you want to go fast, go alone. But if you want to go far, go together." It's simple but powerful, and it's especially true in rooms like this one. Because we could rush through decisions and steamroll dissent or try to carry all the weight on our own shoulders. But we know that's not how lasting progress is made. The real wins, the ones that actually help people and make their lives better, come from working together. Even when it's slower and messier, or if it means having a little bit longer meeting than we wanted. In this room, we may not always agree, but we are on the same journey. We all want what's best for everyone in this county that we call our home. And if we stay committed to listening to one another, to learning from one another, and to leading one another with respect, we will go farther than any of us could ever go alone. I want to thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your commitment to serve the interests of everyone in our county with wisdom and patience and integrity. May we remember that the well-being of one affects the well-being of us all. May we recognize that justice is not just a system, but a sacred trust, and that no person is less worthy of dignity, no voice less deserving of being heard, and no dream too small to matter. May the decisions made in this chamber today be infused with wisdom and empathy, remembering that freedom is strongest when it belongs to all of us. And so today, as we bring our ideas, our values, and maybe a little bit of patience to the table, let us aim to leave this room not as winners or losers, but as a united community, seeking better answers and stronger outcomes that benefit everyone. And if at any point today, things get a little stuck, or a little tense, or go a little longer than we expect, just remember, going together may take more time, but it eventually gets us where we all really want to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Judge, would you like to give some opening comments before we begin?
Thank you. Well, welcome. All of you coming out of Father's Day. I hope everybody had an amazing Father's Day's weekend. And we will actually have a resolution that relates to fathers. So I'm looking forward to that. And just on behalf of myself and our Commissioners, we thank you for being here. We're always very appreciative. Not only when you have some activity, but if you could tune in, we always appreciate as much participation as possible. The more the community knows about our decisions, the better it is for us as well. So thank you for being here, wishing all of you just an amazing Monday and just a very blessed week. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Judge. Next item is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is composed of items 4A to 4AB. Are there any items from the court to pull this morning? Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Judge. We have a motion. One second, let us get that up. Motion from Judge Someniego to approve, second from Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open.
I'm gonna have to do mine verbally because it's not pulling up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Butler is absent, and the motion carries. Next item on the agenda are resolutions. We will be requesting to postpone. Item 5A, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing and commending the 50th anniversary of Judge William Moody's distinguished service with El Paso County. We can have a motion to postpone that. Thank you, Judge. We have a motion from Judge Someniego, second from Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open.
Aye for me.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Ogden. Aye for Judge Someniego, and Commissioner Butler is absent. The motion carries. Thank you. Item 5B, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing and honoring Judge Robert S. Anchondo for his induction into the Stanley Goldstein Treatment Court Hall of Fame.
Thank you. I have Judge Anchondo.
Good morning. Well, let me read this into the record. It's a, this is very special. Knowing his family and knowing the judge for such a long time, the fact that he went to Jefferson means nothing about how good I feel, right? It's a secondary thing, but it really isn't. So, whereas Robert S. Anchondo was sworn in as Judge of County Criminal Court at Law Number 2 on February the 18th, 2002, after 20 years of serving the community as a private practicing attorney, and he took office with dedication to continue to serve with hard work, integrity, and of course compassion. Whereas once he was on the bench, Judge Anchondo quickly saw the need to address the problem that impaired drivers' cost to the safety of the community and themselves as their issues of alcohol abuse, substance abuse, mental health, and trauma contributed to them returning to the criminal justice system. Whereas Judge Anchondo created the El Paso County DWI Intervention and Treatment Program, which began operations on November 4th, 2004, to reduce future DWI offenses in our community by offering intervention, treatment, and structure to individuals and their families. Whereas the DWI Treatment Court, the first of its kind in the state of Texas, is dedicated to serving DWI adult offenders regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, or religion, and under the leadership of Judge Robert S. Anchondo, who has guided the team with countless hours of hard work and inspiration since its inception, has successfully graduated over 800 individuals who are now refocused on living good-oriented lives. And whereas the DWI Treatment Court has been selected four consecutive times as a National Academy Court by All Rice, formerly National Association of Drug Court Professionals, and in being selected as a National Academy Court, they are accepting a three-year commitment each time to train, mentor, teach, and start other DWI courts across the nation and internationally. Whereas this impressive achievement can only be attributed to Judge Anchondo's leadership, his ability to lead a multidisciplinary team of experts in their respective fields, and compassion for his program participants as resulted in high performance on the part of the team and participants. Whereas Judge Robert S. Anchondo has also delivered over 100 documentary presentations throughout his professional career as a subject matter expert on DWI courts and All Rice evidence-based practices in general. These platforms on the local, state, national, and international level, where he is well-known for his passionate delivery of information to audiences, which can vary in size from a handful of people to thousands. And whereas on May 28th, 2025, All Rice National Conference, he was selected by All Rice to be inducted into the Stanley Goldstein Treatment Court Hall of Fame, which is the highest honor bestowed by All Rice. It honors individuals who have made indelible contributions to the Treatment Court field. Those who work not only has improved individual court programs, but has also enhanced the treatment of court model and movement. Now therefore be resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court, hereby recognizes and honors Judge Robert S. Anchondo for his outstanding achievement in treatment courts, his dedicated service not only to the local community, but all treatment courts across the country, and for representing El Paso County with pride, honor, and excellence. Signed the 16th day of June, 2025.
We have a motion from Judge Someniego, and a second from Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion carries.
Judge Anchondo.
Thank you, Judge. You know, in that resolution, Judge, you can only kind of factor in a lot of blood, sweat, and tears over the years. But I asked Pastor Keith, and I think I get that right.
Not really.
Well, his words made a profound impact right now. Because when this program initially was beginning, it was one of those where you kind of find out where was this all going. There wasn't too much. Sometimes you had to do things as you felt it going along with this population. But I did know something. What we were doing was not truly working because these people were just coming back into the system. So Keith, I do say this. If I want to go far, we go together. So this united community is always seeking answers. We were part of that. And as you can, as you well know, Judge and Commissioners, I have not done this alone. And so I think when a community comes together and knows that we have to do things different to enhance our public safety, but truly then help these individuals, then we start, I think, doing some greater impacts, better outcomes, better results, and these lives are turned around. I wanted to share something I wrote because when I was there in Florida receiving this award, it was, it was pretty good. I will tell you that. It makes you reflect on a lot of things you've done over the years. But the Stanley Goldstein is to remember this judge. And so I can give the public a little bit of what this award means. When Miami in the 80s was suffering through a cocaine dilemma, this was a judge that was in law enforcement. this was a judge that was in law enforcement. He was a no-nonsense judge. But he was given an opportunity, joined by then Attorney General Janet Reno, Attorney General Janet Reno back then, to start this kind of a model to address this cocaine issue. So it was just him, a public defender, and a DA. That was it. And that's now over 5,000 courts later about his vision, about addressing an issue. It's an issue that affects here, this community, because I was seeing that vision about RDWIs. And RDWIs are a serious problem because there's victims. And so we don't ignore that there's victims in these cases sometimes. But we also understood that if we truly addressed an issue that's affecting these folks, it's causing them to drive, then it needs more enhancement. And I think that's what we've done. And we're very successful about what we do. Again, I don't do it alone. But I wanted to share something with the public, not only here present, but those viewing, you all as supporters of a program. That's now in its, I think we're going on 21, 22 years, something like that. I keep forgetting. That's how long we've been doing it. But I stand before you with profound gratitude and humility as I accept this resolution that you just read, and thank you for that, for receiving this honor, which is truly to be in the Hall of Fame, which is one of the highest awards you could receive in this field. And to stand here in the name of Judge Stanley Goldstein, whose vision and courage helps shape a movement that gives people a second chance is deeply meaningful to me. But this recognition is not solely mine and belongs to the countless individuals who have stood beside me in our shared mission to transform lives through this program, the DWI Intervention and Treatment Program. Since its inception in 2004, our program has been a beacon of hope for individuals grappling with alcohol and drug dependency, mental health issues, PTSD. Together, we have witnessed remarkable stories of recovery, resilience, and redemption. Participants have not only overcome their challenges, but have reunited with their families, reintegrated into a society as contributing members and not as people that are causing public safety. We're proud of that. As I accept your resolution honoring me for this wonderful, wonderful recognition, which is the highest in this treatment court field, and recognizes practitioners with unmatched contributions to the treatment court movement, I do so on behalf of every participant, every team member, every supporter who has believed in the transformative power of second chances. Together, we continue to pave the way for a brighter and more just future in our community. And the training that we have been able to provide to others around the country, and internationally, I would add, has also been a beacon of hope for those who are addressing this issue in their communities to want it to make it safer, and still recognizing that these individuals, once you do help them, they really transform and they become great individuals. And I think some of them have been here before at graduations. And in fact, I just left one right now. I just said, I just said, "Thanks, Judge." Thanks for helping me. But as I end, let me do this. I want to share this recognition with the program's truly Hall of Famers. My team, right here. Without this team, I can't function. So if you all, please stand. Help me out. This is your Hall of Famers. I was gonna show you the award, Judge, because, and Commissioners, because it was heavy. But it's good for El Paso. When Carolyn Harden was mentioning my name and introducing to me, and she kept saying "El Paso", I just wanted her to say "El Paso" many, many more times. So I think she mentioned it about five times. I was truly proud of this city, this county, and the support you all have given us to really do our work and really turn people's lives around. And this is just their award to me. It's a beautiful award, and it's presented as the Treatment Hall of Fame Award to Robert Anchondo. And it says the following, "For presentment contribution to the treatment court field, May 2025." I hold it here with honor and support of everything you've done for us and for this community. And I truly thank you for this wonderful resolution, recognizing the work and the work that these folks also do for the benefit of this community. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you so much, Judge. There's always... I don't care how many times we meet, there's two things he always mentions. And he gets offended when I say congratulations, and he says, "Well, you have to congratulate my team." And we do that. That's very, very important. The other thing you always hear from the judge is that he's got so much to go. And you know, typically you're thinking, "Wow, this is amazing what he's done." And the next sentence is, "Oh, my God, we've got so much more to do." And one of the things that he wants, and I hope the community rallies and the county rallies around, is a follow-up on these individuals that graduate. To make sure that they're going in the right direction. And you know, they've come up through difficult situations, but they have all this excitement about doing something, but they also need to be guided and mentored to become more. Anybody that goes through what they've gone through in 18 months to graduate can be very valuable to our community because they come in with a really different insight. People that go through difficult times see the world a little different, and they can help so many others. So this idea of continuing, and also in all fairness, you know, right now, there's a lot of pressure about things that we could keep and grants that are being cut. And I can tell you, I mean, I love all the treatment courts, obviously, but this one in particular, because of everything that he's done, I wish that it would never be in any situation where we were gonna do less because of funding. So we're very prepared to make sure that we do everything that we can to continue this program. I know somebody who appreciates very much the criminal justice situation as their Commissioner Coronado, and I'll ask him to say a few words about, also his friend as well.
Thank you, Judge. You know, I've been practicing for, okay, that'll tell my age, right? Forty years in this state, both as a prosecutor in Austin and here in El Paso, and then out in the defense barn. I tell you, what always I've come across is that, and it's spelled out in our codes, our penal code, the penal code and the Code of Criminal Procedure, that the reason that we have the punishment ranges in cases like DWI is either for retribution, punishment, or rehabilitation. Well, we know that the majority of people that come into our justice system, that are justice-involved, are not bad people. They've just done bad things, associated with people who do bad things or dumb things. And the treatment courts really, and I've experienced this throughout my career as an attorney on both sides, is that we always, when we put people on probation or we do diversion programs, it's really tried to focus on that part of rehabilitation, because most people don't belong in jail or in prison. We want to focus on that rehabilitation. And really, over the history that I've seen, it's very difficult for our system of community supervision to really deal with that change of behavior in the rehabilitation because of lack of resources. And I think these treatment courts are really what focuses on changing people's behavior the right way to rehabilitate people. You know, and we're hoping that we can change the state's minds about not, you know, about taking away some of these grants for these treatment courts that we've seen lately. Because they truly are the way that we need to do that. Do they, does it take a lot of time and resources? Absolutely. But look at what we have as a result, the results that have been provided by these treatment courts like Judge Anchondo has done. It's truly the best way to do for our community what we should be doing for those justice-involved individuals. And I want to thank you and your team, Judge. Like I said, I've been practicing for many, many, many years. Not quite as long as you have.
I still think you're pretty young.
But, but you know, this is a way for us to try and make sure that we rehabilitate people from, you know, and changing this behavior. From my psychology background, you don't change people's behavior. The best way to change people's behavior is not by punishing them, is not by negative reinforcement that is taking away something positive, but rather by positive reinforcement. And that's really what, you know, this is about. So I really want to thank for your continued dedication, you and your team, for the service and the results you've provided to our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Judge, is there any, if someone...
I'm sure.
Say a few words. Well, once again, we thank you, Judge. I mean, thank you for putting us on the map as you do. And I always combine, sort of make everyone understand that we do a lot for economic development, but there's nothing more important for economic development than to have a safe environment. Companies don't like to come into where there's accidents or, well, we don't call them accidents anymore, right? Crashes, right? And so we, you know, having a safe community and knowing that we address these issues impact our ability to bring companies in more. People think about all of that. Where do I want to be? And so not only does he touch lives, but it also impacts our economic development initiatives that we have. So once again, thank you very much. Thank you for putting us on the map like you do. So thank you.
Well, I really deeply appreciate it. Thank you very much.
5C, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing the month of June 2025 as Father Figure Appreciation Month in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you. Can I have, will send Beth come up here, please? And others?
Good morning. Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for letting us be here. I have my team coming up because I want to introduce them really quickly before, and if it's okay with you, we're gonna switch speakers to one of the fathers who's been in our program who'd like to address you.
Okay.
Okay.
If you don't mind, we'll read the resolution and then we'll have you...
I'm so sorry, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, that way the public will get a sense of what we're gonna do.
Absolutely.
So thank you so much. As I said earlier, that this resolution relates a lot to Father's Day, and so very, I'm honored to be able to read this into the record. Whereas father figures play a vital role in the lives of children, providing love, guidance, discipline, and support that help lay the foundation of strong families and striving communities. Whereas positive involvement from father figures is closely associated with better outcomes for children, including higher academic achievement, improved behavior, greater emotional well-being, and stronger social development. Whereas having a father figure who is sociable, confident, and who exhibits self-control serves as powerful role models, significantly reducing the likelihood of children engaging in risky behaviors during adolescence. Whereas the father figures are individuals who step forward each day to take on the responsibilities of fatherhood, educating, mentoring, protecting, encouraging, and providing for children. And whereas father figures come in many forms, including biological, adoptive, stepfathers, grandfathers, uncles, older brothers, teachers, coaches, foster fathers, godfathers, also known as padrinos, and many others who embrace the role. And whereas we recognize the importance of creating systems, policies, and community support that enable and encourage father figures to be active and present in the lives of children. Whereas El Paso Center for Children is building a supportive community where dads and father figures feel valued, stay engaged, and strengthened to build healthy co-parenting relationships and family bonds because when fathers thrive, so do children and families. Now therefore be resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court do hereby recognize the month of June 2025 as Father Figure Appreciation Month. Signed the 16th day of June 2025.
We have a motion from Judge Someniego and a second from Commissioner Stout. The voting is open. Thank you. The motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, Beth. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I know that many of you are fathers or father figures in someone's lives, and I'm not. But I sure do appreciate the ones that I've experienced, and I want to introduce my team. I'm Beth Singer at the El Paso Center for Children. Jose Alameo is in charge of our fatherhood program. Ron Long and Gabino Mesa are also on our team, who help fathers in our community connect with one another to share and learn about best practices for being dads. But most importantly, where is Ray? Where did Ray go? Ray Sanchez and Ron Long helped us conceive of this project and helped us advise us about the direction we wanted to go in creating a program to support fathers. So I want to thank them. And I also want to introduce a father who's been in our program who wants to share a little bit about his story with you. So I'd like to introduce Rod Hamilton II and his son Axel, who are here today to support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Appreciate that.
Thank you. I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. It's an honor to stand...
It's an honor to stand before you today, not just as a graduate of the fatherhood program, but as a man transformed by it. A month ago, I finished the program, but the truth is, my real journey as a father, as a man, and as a human being in healing began long before that, and it continues with every intentional step I take. Today's proclamation is more than a ceremony. It's a declaration that fathers matter, that our healing, our presence, our growth, it all matters. Not just for our children, but for our communities, for the future we are trying to build. This program changed my life. It offered more than parenting tips. It offered transformation, emotional literacy, brotherhood. It gave me space to take off my armor and still be respected, to be vulnerable without being viewed as weak, to grow without shame. And that's what I want to leave you with today. We must stop suffering in silence. We must normalize fathers talking to fathers. We must stop making manhood a place of isolation. I would rather carry the weight of your tears than the weight of your casket. I do not say that lightly. That is not just a quote. It is a vow. Because silence kills, pride isolates, but presence, presence seals. To every father here today, your heart, your mental health, your voice, they matter. Vulnerability isn't weakness. It is the bridge between generations. This program helped me break cycles I did not even know I was repeating, and it reminded me of this simple but powerful truth. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. That ounce looks like emotional support. It appears to be a case of choosing patience over punishment. It looks like saying, I need help, instead of burying it under silence. And today, what makes this moment even more powerful is that my son is here with me. He gets to see his father stand in truth. He gets to see that fatherhood is strength and softness. Being a man means healing, showing up, and leading with love. Son, I want you to remember this moment forever. When life gets heavy, when the world makes you question your worth, I want you to hear my voice in your heart. We did this. This is our legacy, and it will always be your safe place. To the city, thank you for making the space for fathers grow. To the facilitators, thank you for believing in us. And to my fellow dads, keep showing up, keep speaking up, keep preaching out. This is what fatherhood looks like. This is what healing looks like. And this, this is what legacy feels like. Thank you.
Thank you. What a beautiful tribute for Father's Day. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge Somanyego, Commissioners Court. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. Today, we come together to recognize the vital role that fathers play in the well-being and success of our families, our communities, and our future. Fathers are mentors, protectors, providers, and role models. Their presence strengthens the foundation of our homes and contributes meaningfully to the emotional and social development of our children. This resolution acknowledges and honors the dedication of fathers and father figures, those who lead by example, support with compassion, inspired through their love and presence. Today, I get all emotional, okay? As El Paso County, we affirm the importance of encouraging responsible and engaged fatherhood and supporting programs that help all fathers thrive. Let this be a reminder of the power of fatherhood and our collective responsibility to foster environments where fathers are supported, encouraged, and celebrated. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jose. Anyone else that... Okay. I want to thank you. You know, our society and our communities, not only here in El Paso, are not as fit as they used to be. I mean, we could count a lot on the community itself to show the values, to show... But there, right now, so many things are happening that it's very difficult to rely on some of that. So we have to rely on parenting as one of the major things. And then there's so many amazing fathers, I mean incredibly amazing fathers, that we don't want them to be limited to only their children, but to expand that ability. There's so many, I mean, I run into so many. I was a probation officer, so I got to see, you know, I remember the gang that got formed, the Fatherless, was the name of the gang that got formed because they didn't have fathers. They didn't have father figures, but they represented the impact that it has not to have the role modeling and the father. And like I said, we're always sort of limiting ourselves to thinking that you don't have to be the father. But there's so many young people, both women and young girls and young boys, looking for that role modeling, looking for that. And like I said, we really need that more than we've ever needed it before, is to have that impact on our children. And I know I keep saying the pandemic, but a lot of things came out of there that make it even more important, much, much more important, for us to be there for our children. So I thank you for what you're doing. Once again, I think it's going to be the kind of thing that most communities would not be able to do, but it can happen here in El Paso. And like Judge Anchondo, we do some great things, and next thing you know, some other community wants to follow our steps. And I think this is one of those where we could get, it's not about just our community, but to get, you know, everyone as involved as we can about helping others. So we thank you tremendously from Commissioners Court, whatever it is that we could do, would be just extremely valuable. So we thank you.
Item five D. A proven adopter resolution affirming the significance of Juneteenth and declaring June 19, 2025 as Juneteenth Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Commissioner Stout?
All right. Thank you very much. Very honored to be able to read this resolution into the record. Good morning, Ms. Tucker. How are you? Just a couple of comments before I read the resolution. You know, these are, I think, really, really important days in the history of the United States. And acknowledging our history and mistakes in our history is not the same as not caring about our country, but in fact, it is caring about our country. And those who would gloss over history or act like we have fully addressed the shameful parts of our history, I think, are the ones that really don't care about this country. We are the United States of America, and that means that we don't leave anyone behind. We don't force patriotism through repression. And as elected officials, we represent everyone in our community, even when we don't always agree on policy. We don't call people names from the dais. We don't represent only those who voted for us. We don't call members of our community the enemy. Ending slavery was only the beginning of making things right, and we are nowhere near the end of making things right by making things fair. And so I'm honored to be able to read this resolution, and then we'll hear from you all who are here to speak with us. So the resolution states, whereas the official national Juneteenth theme for 2025 is, "Together we ride the Juneteenth wave of freedom to liberty." And whereas, on June 19, 1865, the people of Texas first learned that all slaves in the former Confederacy had been freed, two years after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation to the rebellion states. And whereas nearly 250,000 former slaves in Texas were to be given absolute equality in their personal and property rights, following the reading of General Order Number Three, delivered by Union General Gordon Granger in Galveston, following the end of the American Civil War. And whereas, on January 1, 1980, Juneteenth became an official state holiday in Texas through the efforts of Al Edwards, a Black American state legislator. The successful passage of this bill marked Juneteenth as the first emancipation celebration granted official state recognition. And whereas Juneteenth, also called Freedom Day or Emancipation Day, remains the most popular and widely recognized annual event celebrating the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas Juneteenth stands as a poignant reminder of the atrocities endured by Black Americans. It simultaneously commemorates the formidable challenges and barriers surmounted in the relentless pursuit of civil rights, voting rights, and social justice, while honoring the monumental achievements and contributions of millions of Black Americans. And whereas local organizations and initiatives exist to properly honor, observe, and preserve Black culture, heritage, and history in El Paso and other areas of the Southwest. These include Juneteenth El Paso, Black El Paso Voice, the McCall Neighborhood Center, Oral Temple Number Nine, Oral Court Number 20, El Paso Holy Royal Arch Masons Number 90, the Inter Club Council, Amplify El Paso, the Black Roundtable, the El Paso Museum of History, and as of 2025, the New Black Business Living Museum. And now therefore be it resolved by El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court that June 19 be recognized and celebrated as Juneteenth in El Paso County, Texas. Signed the 16th of June 2025, the Honorable County Commissioners Court.
We have a motion from Commissioner Stout, a second from Judge Somanyego. The voting is open. Commissioner Stout, the motion carries.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. Resolution. I come here, you know, often, obviously, for different, different reasons, but it's always great to see you all. But this is really important for us for celebrating Juneteenth here in El Paso. And we're still trying to educate the community about the purpose of Juneteenth and really what it is. And we just want that help from the county, the city, to encourage others to understand the symbols and why we choose the colors that we choose, which is red, white, and blue. And that all has to do with the fact that we're descendants of Black Americans who were slaves here in the United States. So our celebration, we just had this weekend with the City of El Paso, and that included those who came out just to celebrate with us, to learn more about what Juneteenth is. And every year, we find that more and more people are just coming to understand that it's not just what's considered another Black History Month. Right now in El Paso, I wish I could say that everyone is welcome, but we're still having some issues when it comes to being Black here in El Paso and the racism. And sometimes it's internal, internal issues as well. So what we do is try to educate the community, educate ourselves, those in our organizations, about the purpose of our freedom and what we're supposed to do with that. In addition to that, we've created the State of Black El Paso, which happens on June 19, that will take part in, that will host at 3:30 at the McCall Center, which we revisit those issues and see how far that we've come. So all that has to do with Juneteenth. For us, Juneteenth is every day because it represents freedom. So we want to encourage the Commissioners Court also to invite us, if you need to, to let us help tell the story to the different departments in the county, so that it's understood why we celebrate the way we celebrate and the meaning, the true meaning and the purpose of it. And we have a few people here today who will be celebrating also, coming up this Thursday, Ms. Anna Howe, who I'm sure all of you already know. She's also the president of the El Paso Commission for Women. We have Ms. Shoneek Torrens, who is a Navy veteran. And Mrs. Howe is also an Army veteran. And we have Mr. Curtis Smith, who's a retired Army veteran. Curtis and Shoneek will be part of the panel discussion this Thursday for our Juneteenth State of Black El Paso. So I'm going to have them say a few words.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you again. I'm here representing the McCall Neighborhood Center, and I'm the Second Vice President of the Board of Directors. The McCall Neighborhood Center is a nonprofit center that was organized in 1984 by Ms. Leon Washington. And for the last decade, even before Juneteenth became an official holiday, we've been celebrating and hosting a Juneteenth prayer breakfast to celebrate the accomplishments of African-Americans who have continued and contributed to the struggle of the freedom that was gained on Juneteenth, June 19, 1865, from the Emancipation Proclamation, which was issued in 1863. So you see, two years after the Emancipation Proclamation came out, it didn't get to Texas until two years later. So that's one of the biggest reasons that we celebrate Juneteenth. So we just want to thank you for having us this morning and that you're willing to listen to our history and who we are and what we stand for. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. I just want to thank you all for continuing to support us. Commissioner Stout, thank you for always, as I come down here and hear the resolutions, you always educate everybody in the room about what the resolution represents, a little history behind it. And Judge, you always give a little insight on how you learn every time. So I just want to thank you all for allowing us to come down and you all continue to support the efforts that we put forth to educate everybody in the El Paso community about what Black history is about. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Great day, everyone. As I introduce myself, I am Shoneek Torrens. I was born here in El Paso. I had the pleasure of meeting you at the different community events. I've had a chance to plant seeds and educate others. Even though I was born here, there was information that was not plentiful or accessible because of where I was born at the time. So with this being Juneteenth, we have the spotlight for Juneteenth. It's education in a larger circle, even more so for the El Paso history, so that way we all can know more so we can do better. My whole issue in regards to Juneteenth is that it's a celebration, everyone. That's what it is. It's a celebration. Our ancestors, they struggled in the heat through different inclement weather type of situations or whatever it was. They did that. So we have to continue to celebrate and be proud. Every last person in this room will be so honored for their birthday. They will be so honored for their little one's birthday, for their abuelita's birthday, or grandparents' or whatever's birthday. Well, this is very similar. And we need to make sure when it's time to celebrate, we don't show, we don't, we're not shy, right? We're not shy when we're celebrating others and our people connected to us. So we want you to bring that same beautiful energy when it's time for Juneteenth in El Paso, Texas. Go Sun City, right? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And you're right. We do need to make it a celebration. And I thank Commissioner Stout. There's two things that we feel very proud about here in Commissioners Court. One is getting people become aware of things, like become aware of situations. And the other one is education. And that's what you're doing, because we pride ourselves tremendously that we are very supportive to the Black community, that we want that to strive. But I think we need, you said something earlier, to get that circle a little wider, you know, that there's a good number of people that understand that. But there's so many people that don't understand the contributions that have been made and the importance of having a Black community is a big part of who we are. And we should feel that sort of a sense of excitement, just like we do any other celebrations. So I thank you for that, for reminding us that this is very special. I mean, it's very, very special to everyone that we get to understand things better, and we'll do everything possible to be supportive for that. So we thank you for that. Commissioner Stout?
Well, I just want to thank you all once again for helping us and educating us and always, you know, providing us with this information that is so important and uplifting your... your community the way you do. You know, it's, I love the work that y'all do and I'm so happy to be part of this and be able to do this, this, this resolution with y'all and work with you and looking forward to the, to the, to the panel and the event and hearing, hearing y'all speak on Thursday. Thank you very much. Can we take a picture with the resolution?
Thank you.
Item 5E, approve and adopt a resolution in support of the Texas Dream Act and urging state and federal officials to protect affordable access to higher education for all Texas students, regardless of immigration status, for the benefit of all Texans.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Judge. We have a number of folks here to, to speak on the item. Some students from UTEP, we have Texas Rising, we have the Border Network for Human Rights back there as well. So I'm going to, I'm going to say a few words and then we'll read the resolution and then whoever would like to, to address the court will. And EPCC is also here, yes. Thank you very much for reminding me. You know, I just, I just want to say it's, it's hard to believe, I think, that once upon a time in Texas, the legislature actually did something that made sense when it comes to, you know, something like policy regarding immigrants. And I think that they, back then, generally understood that immigrants in Texas are good for the state and that includes all immigrants, including those that don't have documentation. And, you know, this is not to try to whitewash the state's racist past as a member of the Confederacy or its treatment of Mexicans and those of Mexican, Mexican origin in the past and now. But when we have same policy, it's really important, I think, to maintain that. And countless people have benefited from the policy that we're talking about here and therefore the state of Texas has benefited. But in the current spirit of cutting their nose off to spite their face, the state attorney general and other statewide elected officials signed off on what seems to be a coordinated effort to bypass the legislature and do away with the Texas Dream Act, this policy. I think it's perfectly appropriate for us to address this. And education is not the only way to economic mobility, but is a critical and proven pathway. And the general health and welfare of our community is our purview at the county and it's why we have things like economic development departments and community service departments. Education also, once upon a time, was considered a critical to building civil society and for enriching the public body politic. And so with that, I'll go ahead and read the resolution and then we'll hear. The resolution states, whereas since 2001, the Texas Dream Act has allowed eligible undocumented students to access in-state tuition rates at public colleges and universities, provided they meet specific residency, educational, and legal status requirements. And whereas, this policy has been in place for over two decades in compliance with federal law and has contributed significantly to the state's higher education system and workforce by enabling thousands of students to pursue degrees and contribute to the Texas economy. And whereas, on June 4th, 2025, the U.S. Department of Justice filed a lawsuit seeking to strike down this policy, arguing that it conflicts with federal statute, and within hours, the state agreed to end it, despite overwhelming support for the program from all corners of the state, including the business community. And whereas, ending in-state tuition for undocumented students would have devastating consequences for thousands of Texas youth, stripping them of affordable educational opportunities and increasing economic inequality. And whereas, undocumented immigrants in Texas contribute an estimated $5.4 billion annually in this state through local taxes, including about $80 million annually in tuition payments, and 18,000 undocumented students graduate from Texas high schools each year. And now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court affirms its strong support for the Texas Dream Act, denounces the Department of Justice's legal challenge to this longstanding and lawfully enacted policy, and urges state and federal officials to protect affordable access to higher education for all Texas students, regardless of immigration status, for the benefit of all Texans. Signed the 16th day of June 2025, the Honorable County Commissioners Court.
We have a motion from Commissioner Stout and a second from Judge Tom Inigo. The voting is open. The motion carries.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Judge. First and foremost, I want to say thank you all for allowing this to be on your, on your agenda, resolution. We appreciate it very much. And first and foremost, we appreciate this so much. This means so much. This entire body you see behind us represents so much. We have so much influence across the community. Now, as we begin to hear the following speakers, we'd like to ask everyone listening, everyone virtually, everybody in this building, that we have so much importance on this tuition issue. Anybody who's capable of doing good, this means so much to us. I ask that you all please, please, please disapprove actively. This is not just another resolution. This is not just another ceremony. Think about those recent high school graduates, how this is about to affect them in the next two to three months. Education is so important to all of us. Had it not been for education, none of you would be on this board right now. Had it not been for education, none of us would be here today. I ask because this is exactly what we have to fight about every single day. Because you were born somewhere else, you have to worry about how am I going to get my family to be fed? How am I going to pay my own job? How am I going to get to school or to work? Isn't that so disturbing when you have to worry about that, especially in the upcoming fall semester? When your intention is just to better yourself and your future? So I ask that we listen to these speakers, prepare yourselves to have harder conversations with your colleagues and with your networks and those who disagree with you. So maybe create coalitions with other counties to take risks. For the students who can't or the ones who want to be here, because some of them are truly scared, truly. Now luckily, El Paso County is a safe county, a safe city. But imagine those across the state, imagine those across the city, the nation. I ask that you lead this challenge against the state and the administration because we believe in you. We genuinely do. And it's not just the people in your precincts that believe in you, but the entire county believes in you, the city believes in you. And considering that El Paso is the largest bilingual city in the Western Hemisphere, we should be leading this challenge. And we should be proud of that. And it's not just for the economic improvements that, in this region, but because we should set the standard for the counties and the state and the nation to lead the way. But when you tell, when we tell you these stories, it's because we believe in you. That's part of why you were all elected. You all have the capacity to move these mountains, these literal mountains that we have in El Paso. Part of that being said, we ask that when you finish hearing these stories, that the work is not done. They genuinely mean something to us. There are some stories that are not going to be heard because they are so scared to come here today. But that being said, I hear and thank you all, especially those who are here listening virtually. So please, proactively. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Jesse, can you, can you state your name and who you're representing just for the record?
My real name is Seuss, but I know what everyone knows. He has Jesse. I'm president of the UTEP College Democrats and, and yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. I am Natalie Fernandez. I'm with the UTEP College Democrats. Thank you so much for having us. It means a lot to me. This is the first time I've gotten to experience anything like this, and I'm proud to because this is something that's so important to me as a citizen of El Paso. How can you get away with robbing students of affordable education? You villainize undocumented immigrant students and call them criminal aliens and government freeloaders, criminal aliens that will murder you, your family, your neighbor's family, yet according to the FBI's statistics, from the fiscal year of 2024, a total of 29 homicides had been committed by undocumented immigrants. Not 29,000, not 29 million, 29. But why is this relevant? The Texas Dream Act, an act that has given one of the most vulnerable groups of students in the nation access to affordable education, an act that allows for undocumented students to have in-state tuition rates, making it affordable for these students that statistically come from lower-income households, it makes education possible. The condemning of this act is sinister, and everyone in the nation should question why it's ending after 20 years of success, $80 million annually in tuition payments, and $5.4 billion paid in taxes by these people annually, once again. We are robbing Texas of its future teachers, its doctors, its future working class, and they will no longer be able to access affordable, because they will no longer be able to access affordable education. We are robbing children of their dreams because of actions never in their control. We are robbing lineages, opportunities to escape poverty, all while they are expected to continue contributing their taxes to us, contribute out-of-state tuition when they live here, have lives here, and are just as Texan as anyone else because as per the eligibility requirements, they need to live here in Texas for at least three years prior graduating high school and one year prior college. We continue to take from these vulnerable and villainized communities, but most importantly, we're taking away from their children. We're taking away from their dreamers. We keep moving the goalposts, moving the standards, and removing opportunities. Our state thrived with this act in place and will continue to do so if it is reinstated. Anyone who is against this act isn't coming from a place of concern for the economy or crime like this administration would want you to believe. It is much more sinister, and especially as citizens of El Paso, we need to consider what, or better yet, who they will be willing to go after next if we let them get away with doing this to our Texas dreamers. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners Court and the El Paso community. My name is Angelica Rodriguez. But today, I stand before you as a fellow UTEP student, one who believes in the power of our voices and the strength of our community. Although the County Commissioners Court has been a space of advocacy and support for our community, the reality is that many students are still living in fear. That's why I'm here today, to share the story of a fellow classmate. And as I read this remarkable journey, I ask that you keep this in mind. If it weren't for the fear and uncertainty, this Texas dreamer would have been here instead of me. And I apologize if I get emotional, just reading this on their behalf really brings a whole new set of emotions. But I was not aware of my immigration status and the negative impact this would have on me throughout my journey in school until I got to my senior year of high school. I worked so hard since I first entered Head Start at the age of two. I participated in multiple spelling bees, received the All Amen Dadis Grow World in middle school, and was able to graduate top 10 of my class in high school. My senior year, I was informed that a student like me would not qualify for FAFSA like the rest of my peers and was wrongly informed that I would have to pay for out-of-state tuition. Then this made me lose hope, and I chose to take off years of school because I did not hold the knowledge about what the Texas Dream Act could do for students like myself. I always thought there was no way I could afford school until I found out that by having attended schools here in Texas my whole life and having resided in Texas, I would be allowed to pay in-state tuition. This information opened up my mind to a whole new set of possibilities. In that moment, I decided that it was my time, my time to chase the education I longed for. I had always loved school and the possibility of gaining new knowledge and new skills. I signed up to go to El Paso Community College first because tuition was a lot less than UTEP. After a couple of years, I transferred to UTEP. I remembered stepping through UTEP that first day, and it felt so unreal. I never imagined having the opportunity to attend a university. Fast forward a year and a half later, and here I find myself questioning what my next steps will be because of the elimination of Texas Dream Act. Tuition is already hard to pay now, and having to pay out-of-state tuition will only make my dreams impossible to obtain. I am realistic about the idea that I would no longer be able to attend, I will not be able to afford tuition at any university. School is my motor, and now I feel like a car trying to move without any gasoline. I feel stuck without any answers, without any hope, and with a lot of fear and disappointment. A state that I had predilegance to since I was a young girl has now turned its back on me and my fellow peers. Just like myself, I know many students that are also feeling the impacts of this. Future nurses, surgeons, engineers, teachers, accountants, and social workers would not be able to have the opportunity to give back to the state we value. The future is nothing but a blur now, and I could no longer plan for the future because of all the uncertainties this all is. I now call on you to extend your advocacy beyond words. I urge the county commissioners, Judge, President Wilson, SGA president, and every student to take action, educate yourselves, empower each other, and begin creating the change our community needs. Right now is a time to lead with courage and compassion. Lastly, thank you, Commissioners Court, and thank you to the Texas dreamer who gave me the privilege to share your story today.
Thank you. Beautiful story. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Siwon Diaz. I am here as a UTEP alumni, and I know that a lot of you have heard my story before. A lot of you know this story, but I think I have to keep on repeating it. I think I need to keep on saying, we're here, we're here to stay, and we're not afraid. I know a lot of the times they're trying to keep our voices down, especially at the Texas legislative sessions, but we're going to continue talking about it. And thank you for adopting this resolution. Thank you, David Stowe, for, for working on it, Commissioner Stout. So I graduated from high school in 2005. It's been a while back. And when I graduated, I went to the local community college and said, I want to, an application, I filled it out, I turned it in. I didn't have a social security number on it, and they said, you can't, you can't do that. And that was in 2005. You can't come in because you don't have a social security number. I went at 17 years old, back home crying, thinking, what am I going to do? So I started getting involved with local organizations, and I found out about the Noriega Bill. Once I found out about the Noriega Bill, I was like, okay, there is something I can do. So I went back in 2006 to the community college, and I took copies and said, this is the Noriega Bill, and I can actually enroll in college. So I enrolled in college, and I just found out that I just needed to, to pay my own tuition. I was not eligible for federal grants or any, I was not eligible, and I honestly, I was like, okay, I can do this. I took one class at a time. I ended up graduating from UTEP in 2013 with the efforts of family and friends and having three jobs, I was able to pay for it. I didn't ask money for anything. We're not asking handouts. We're not asking for, to be treated differently, but we just want the same opportunities as everyone else. So I think it's so important that this continues to be supported, that the Texas Dream Act continues to support students. Because this is not about protecting U.S. citizens, because if that was the case, then U.S. citizens will receive free tuition, and they're still having to pay, and they're still having to work. So this is not about protecting them. This is about fighting with the undocumented community because we are doing a lot with so little. We're doing, working, we are professionals. So this is- So this is not about protecting US citizens. This is about a fight with the undocumented people that are just here to have a better future. So thank you for considering and for continuing to support the Texas Dream Act.
Thank you.
Hi everyone, my name is Ruby Rodriguez. I'm the advocacy organizer for Texas Rising and thank you for having us today. So as for today, I'm just gonna say the following. El Paso is a bi-national community composed of individuals who navigate two identities. Among these individuals are there are students who strive daily to obtain an education, whether it be through high school, through a high school diploma, vocational training, or a bachelor's degree. Access to education is a fundamental human right. In 2021, 20,000 students who signed an in-state tuition affidavit constituted 1.5% of all students enrolled in higher education and technical schools. The average income of an undocumented student employed full-time with a bachelor's degree is around like 49,000. In contrast, a student who possesses only a high school diploma, who earns, will earn a total of 20,000 annually. The recent decision of our judges to overturn the Texas Dream Act presents a significant barrier, impeding minorities from acquiring formal education to improve their circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Uh, my name is Denise Ayuso. I'm the business organizer. I work with the EPPCC chapter as well as the UTEP chapter. And today I would just like to say that the Texas Dream Act allowed so many people an access to education, the ones that became first-generation students so that their children didn't have to be. There was a photo circulating around recently of a student walking the border with her cap and gown on their way to graduation. And he, like many others, could tell you that the, the community strength that takes to make that happen and how much extra effort these students have to put in just to accomplish the same thing that so many others take for granted. The Texas Dream Act was one that strived to make communities better all across the state and even in border cities. It has shown, it has been shown that communities do better when their population is educated and in pursuit of better lives. And we should strive to make education more accessible and affordable and not take it away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. Uh, my name is Michael Gutierrez. I am the Regional Program Coordinator and, for Texas Rising. And I have been thinking a lot about the things that are transpiring within our country and within our community over the last couple of weeks. The Texas Legislature, of course, is a no surprise, is attacking public education and they have been for the entire legislative session. My thoughts in doing the work that I do every day has been coming into my mind a lot and I've been thinking about the soul of our country as our previous president has stated before, um, leaving office. And so I came up with a poem of how I'm feeling towards our country right now at this point. America, my land of thee, so vast in dreams, so proud and free. From humble shores to mountains grand, we forged a hope, we took a stand. How far we've come through trial and flame, yet now we face a fear, a shame. A fear of strangers at our door, though we were strangers once before. We turned away the tired eyes that looked to us with hopeful cries. And Lady Liberty, still she waits with torch in hand at freedom's gate. She stands and faces distant lands with broken chains still in hand. She calls the weary, the worn, the brave, who cross the tide for dreams that wait. We must not lose what made us right. We took a stand to strength to fight. From bunker hill to the streets of Los Angeles, our pulse still echoes in each beat. So let us rise proud and free with kindness and just to clear truth aligned. Let us not, let not our hearts grow cold and small, for freedom's promise is for all. And so is education. Education is a fundamental right and for us to be attacking education shows us as a society that we must as Americans stand for those who cannot stand for themselves, who cannot voice for themselves. It is within the soul of our country to continue the fight. For freedom's promise, like I said, is for all. Thank you so much Commissioners for taking a stand and for once again, leading the example in our country and within our state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning Judge and Commissioners. My name is Ryan Boatwright and I currently serve as the President of the Student Government Association at UTEP. And before I begin, I'd like to preface that my statements reflect my personal views as President and do not represent the views of UTEP or the Student Government Association as a whole. The Texas Dream Act exemplifies the very best that our state and nation have to offer. And 2001, Texas made history by becoming the first state in the nation to allow all individuals access to affordable higher education, regardless of their immigration status. Since the bill was signed into law, 24 other states followed Texas's example. And to see our state abandon those values and ideals is simply appalling. Texas's greatest asset is its people. When we invest in those who are eager to contribute to our communities and economy, everyone benefits. The Texas Dream Act has been one of the most successful higher education policies in the past two decades. In 2021 alone, Texas Dream Act students contributed 81.6 million in tuition and fees to Texas public institutions. And the end of the act would cost the state an estimated $461 million annually in lost economic activity. I fail to see any other reason for the Department of Justice's lawsuit beyond racism. In their lawsuit, they allege that the Texas Dream Act violates federal law by allowing undocumented individuals to receive benefits not extended to US citizens. In reality, the act simply extends to undocumented students the same opportunity for affordable higher education that citizens already receive. These students graduated from Texas high schools. They have lived in, contributed to, and are part of our communities. But for racist and hateful reasons, the Trump administration has decided that they don't matter. The Department of Justice's actions are part of a larger attack on minority communities in higher education, but nobody should be treated differently simply because they were born somewhere else. We're all here for the, the most part because our ancestors made the sacrifice and immigrated to the United States in search of a better life. And today, I urge everyone listening to stand with us in defending the Texas Dream Act. Let us continue to invest in young people who call Texas home. Let us reject fear and division and instead choose opportunity, inclusion, and hope. And to remember that El Paso and UTEP are not thriving, beautiful, safe, and welcoming communities in spite of being a border community, but because we are a border community. Together, we can ensure that Texas remains a place where every student has the opportunity to succeed regardless of their background. Thank you all so much for your time and your commitment to the next generation of El Passosans and leaders.
Thank you, Ryan.
Good morning.
Welcome. Good morning.
Thank you Commissioners Stout for putting this item in the agenda and for your work. And to all of you, it's good to, to be here with you all. My name is Alan Lizaraga. I am here on behalf of the hundreds of families organized under the Border Network for Human Rights. I am here today to make this very clear. This was a coordinated plot to betray our values and to betray our students. This was a coordinated attempt to tell a, a, a group of students that their hard work, that their, all their sacrifices is, is not worth, it's not enough. I think we can all say, you know, all of us Texans from our walks of life, we believe in the promise of education. We see it, you know, as, as, as that stepping stone towards greater economic success, towards building safer communities, towards improving our families. And the Texas Dream Act honor those values. It honor that promise of what our country should be, what our state should be, by giving hardworking, determined young people a fair chance to pursue higher education and again, to contribute back to their families and their communities. Texas was the first state in our nation to do this and it mattered. It mattered because other states followed and it matters for them to do this now. Because if they can get rid of it in Texas this way, they can get rid of it in the other states where, where policies like this are, are currently implemented. I think a lot of the speakers already touched on, you know, the significance, either economic, cultural, social. But I also want to make it clear that immigrants, whether they be, you know, documented or undocumented, they're among us. There are classmates, there are our fellow coworkers, our colleagues, and they represent hope, resilience, even in the most uncertain times. They inspire all of us with their determination for their pursuit of excellence. As a, you know, as a student, I, I had the opportunity to, to meet many friends that were in this position and, and what I can tell you is that they were some of the most hardworking individuals I have ever met. They are some of the brightest people I have ever met, you know, in, in my 23 years of, of being alive. And it pains me to see the look on their faces, to know that their hard work, you know, it's gonna be met with so much pushback just because of, of one decision. So again, on, on behalf of the Border Network, we, we're here to, to condemn this, this lawsuit, this attempt to shame our, our values. We're also here to remember and to remind our state that it is them who are pouring millions of dollars into failed policies that are wasting hundreds and, and millions of taxpayer money into Operation Lone Star, into terrorizing immigrant communities. And it is time for, for us Texans to stand up for, for our values. It is time again to put our, our words into action. It is time for our university to speak with us, to speak for us, to show us, you know, that they are willing to stand up for, for, for us, for students. And with that, again, I just want to thank you for, for this. It's important. And again, thank you Commissioners Stout for, for your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to say anything? Well, for those of you that didn't speak, do you want to introduce yourselves? I know that there's...
My name is Leona Verrett. You mostly know me as the Vice President of the El Paso Young Democrats, but I'm also here as a UTEP student, EPCC alum, and a birthright citizen of the US. Born in South Korea and immigrated here as a baby.
Thank you.
I'm Pauline Dromedes. I'm here in support of the UTEP Democrats for this cause that's very strongly affecting all of us.
Thank you. Thank you. We want to thank you for, for what you're doing. This is, um, young people helping young people. It's very powerful. It's very powerful. I know that there's also expectation on us and you've all said, as elected officials, you know, we, we have to not ignore the tremendous contributions that, you know, migrants have brought to our community, how we are as a community. And I keep hearing the same thing that this is, it's difficult here as well as anywhere else, but it looks like we have more traction in El Paso and then other communities gain the courage and the insight to say, well, maybe, maybe we could try that. We see that over and over again. So whenever you're working for this community, you're actually working for all the border communities because they, they keep an eye on us. And I've said it over and over, this is not an easy place for people to try to come against us. We've always had the, uh, the line in the sand from day one since I started here and Commissioner Stout and everybody else that, you know, we're, we're not just gonna be pushed back on some of these issues because we are part of, of this issue, our families, the friends that we know, people that are here in our community. So we thank you. It's, it's very, uh, huge privilege for us to see young people do what you're doing. It's something that I keep saying over and over, role modeling. You've been hearing today about role modeling and, and that's what you're doing today. Standing up for what you believe in, but also holding our feet to the fire that, that we as elected officials have to do the right things for, for what you're trying to accomplish. And, and of course, you always have the right advocate in Commissioner Stout in anything having to do with all these topics. So we always thank him for bringing these resolutions to Commissioners Court. So back to you Commissioner.
Commissioner Coronado, you wanted to...
Yeah, thank you Commissioners Stout for this resolution. You know, obviously this, this court stands behind you, I think, in terms of what, what, you know, education and it's not just about, you know, education, even though education has served to cure a lot of our evils in this country, that we don't follow the ideals of our forefathers right completely. And eventually they, they win out. It takes time. The history has shown us that it takes time. You know, I, I'm a co-founder of the Canute Alumni Foundation and we, we give out scholarships to individuals that graduate regardless of their immigration status. And it's been, it's policy that we don't hand out this, these funds until these students register in the university. And what we found out that some of them, including people that, you know, students that are dreamers or different immigration status, and, and they come to us and tell us, you know, especially those that have gotten scholarship, they want to go to a school outside of town and they come and tell us, well, you know, we don't have money to travel out to that university or to that college that we want to go to. And, you know, thankfully, our Alumni Foundation has made that money available to these students even before they go and register because that's the only way they can get there. You know, that's some of the, you know, the situations, the challenges that some of these individuals have. And so I stand, you know, fully behind you all. Thank you Commissioners Stout for bringing this resolution and I know that the court is steadfast in, in supporting this.
Commissioner Olgin.
Thank you Judge. I just want to thank all of you for coming out and speaking on behalf of this very important issue. For the past five months, I feel like every day my heart breaks a little bit more with the things that we're seeing our federal government and our state government do to attack our immigrant communities. And this is just the latest, one of the latest examples of that. But I want to thank you for being strong and for making your voices heard. You know, this is something that makes absolutely no sense for the state of Texas to do for all of the reasons that you all stated. These young people who all they want to do is continue with their education. We as a community have already made a significant investment in their education. We've already paid for their elementary school, their middle school, their high school. Why would we not now want them to continue with their education? It, it makes absolutely no sense. All I can do is hope that because of the hard work of young people like you, like the organizations that you are with, we will be able to change this again in the future. We will be able to bring common sense back to our state and to our federal government. But I just want to thank you all for the work that you do, for making your voices heard. You are the reason that we're going to be able to change and undo these horrific policies. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Olgin. Well, uh, thank you all for, for being here and, and participating in co-governance with, with the Commissioners Court and, and for the work that you're doing in each of your, in each of your organizations and through the, throughout the community. You know, I, I, I think it's really important for us to see young people like you all being so active and, and speaking out and advocating on behalf of your peers and, and those that, that are directly affected by, um, by this, uh, this lawsuit and, and the change that's, that's being made. But we have to continue to work together and fight together and, and I'm just, just very inspired to see, to see all of you here and, and doing this work alongside us. So let's take a picture with the, with the resolution with you all and, and we'll continue to work together. Thank you.
Can I get one person on this side? Excellent. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Go. Thank you.
Item number six is public comment. We do have one speaker sign up for public comment. We have Ms. Elizabeth Crawford on the phone. And just as a reminder, there is a five-minute time limit for public comment.
Thank you. Welcome, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you. There isn't much controversy about the Ten Commandments posting bill in Texas. For Christian parents, there are questions appreciating the posting of the Ten Commandments in classrooms, yet uncertain of how all that will work when kids start asking public school teachers about the commandments. The goal of diligent students is to earn As in their academic studies. It would be wonderful if we earned As in keeping the Ten Commandments, but by our own efforts, we have all earned a huge F. We are told in God's Holy Word in the Book of James, "For whoever shall keep the whole law and yet offend in one point, he is guilty of all." Beyond being a moral standard, the purpose of God's commandments, we are told in the Bible, is to be a tutor, a guardian, to lead us to the one who did indeed completely fulfill the law. When we recognize how completely we do fail to honor His holy commands, we're forced to realize that we need a Savior. No matter what eventually happens with the Ten Commandments and the classroom legislation in Texas after the anticipated court battles, and no matter how the implications of that legislation then play out in the public schools of El Paso, true transformation of character and behavior ultimately comes when the Ten Commandments are not merely posted on a classroom wall, but written by Christ's love on the heart of a child. Thank you so much. Hope you have a good day. Thank you.
Item seven, regular agenda, 7A.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Approve and authorize the transfer of funds in the amount of $12,086 from General Fund County Criminal Court II Contract Services General to General Fund County Criminal II Ops Equipment to cover the cost of furniture for County Criminal Court Law Number Two.
Your Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to come before you on this important matter. This is a request where we have an employee that's currently vacant. However, we've made the necessary information available, whether it's not going to have an impact. However, we've not been able to address this equipment issue over the years for one reason or another, and it's just gone to the point where that furniture is just, it's just gotten, it's gotten old, old. And so we have the necessary funds to not impact the budget. We have communicated this with our CSCD folks regarding this contracted service item. And so there will be no impact. Funds are available, and we can continue to hopefully grab some new equipment and then still have the position and effectively operate.
Thank you, Judge.
We have a motion to approve from Judge Samaniego, a second from Commissioner Holguin. The voting is open. The motion carries.
Thank you. We got you twice today.
It's always been a pleasure. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item eight, Commissioners Court, 8A. Receive a presentation from the Precinct Four Office for the proposed Barks Branches and Bookworms Community Fair to be held at Gallegos Park on Saturday, July 26, 2025. Further, discuss and take appropriate action regarding approval of necessary staff time and special events equipment for the public purpose of participating in the event.
Commissioner Coronado? Thank you, Judge. Let's see where Mari and Stephen are, but Judge, this is basically, we are going to hold this event at Gallegos Park, and it's going to be to provide, you know, information and services from various of, you know, it's going to be a family-friendly community fair. I think the backup material was posted. This is, you know, regarding animal welfare services.
Digital, Commissioner, I think it also has our digital library.
Yeah, the digital library. We're calling it the Barks Branches and Bookworms Fair. But it is library engagement, environmental awareness, and animal welfare services that we are going to be holding this town, or rather, community fair out at Gallegos Park. There is going to be costs associated in terms of the personnel that we're asking the court to approve, and so we're asking for the court's support on this. Hi, Mari. Welcome, Mari.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, Marisa Nunez, Senior Policy Advisor to Commissioner Coronado. We are very excited to be bringing this proposal to you all today. In the fall, our office had a town hall with animal welfare, the Sheriff's Office, and the City of El Paso's Animal Services to address some constituent concerns regarding animal welfare. At the end of the roundtable, because we did end up turning it into a little roundtable, we decided that it would be collectively a good thing to bring more educational resources to Precinct Four. And so that's where this community fair is coming from. We've been working very closely with Crystal Reyes to talk about, to figure out how to bring these resources to Precinct Four in a fun and creative way. So I know that at Escarate, there had been some type of similar event. I think it was called Books and Barks or something similar. So being the tree planting office, we decided to add branches in there. The purpose of the event will be to promote responsible pet ownership with different services through the County Animal Welfare Department, highlight public library services from both the city and the county, foster environmental stewardship with the help of local and regional organizations, and connect our residents in Precinct Four to different community services. Our intended target audience is families with children, pet owners, animal lovers in the community, seniors and underserved populations, and environmental advocates and volunteers. These are some of the features that will be involved at the fair, and so we're going to be hopefully doing the free pet microchipping, vaccinations, pending temperature control, and availability of the supplies. We'll have several resources on heat and how that impacts pets, like not to leave your animal in a car, what the temperature difference is for shut windows versus not, proper restraint, spay neuter programs, live demonstrations. The City of El Paso's Animal Services will be doing bite prevention demonstrations. We're also inviting different environmental nonprofits to talk about resources that are tailored to animal welfare. We've been working very closely with the constituent who asked for the town hall to discuss what the needs are in Canutio, and so she emphasized that the community really cares about the animals that exist in and around their neighborhoods. And so they're interested in having resources that talk about what plants are good natural pest repellents, like can I use rosemary or lavender to repel mosquitoes? Or how might I set up security for my yard? Or what types of trees can I plant to ensure that they're native and don't require a lot of water, but can provide shade for pets in my yard? And lastly, we'll also have some library engagement opportunities. We're very excited to have Illumina's mobile unit there. We'll also have the City of El Paso's Mobile Library Unit, enhanced library cards. City Animal Services is going to be doing a kitten and puppy storytime. So this is just kind of a, these are like our primary partners currently. We still are inviting organizations since it is happening next month. We did reach out to PBS, our local PBS station, to see if we can get a character appearance from Clifford the Big Red Dog. It seems like that's going to be a possibility, and so we're very excited about that potential. This is the marketing plan. So really, we're looking to just distribute as much information as we can to school listservs, community centers, county annexes, local businesses. We'll do the flyering ourselves, email, social media, press release, and then hopefully a Facebook event page to help promote it. These are the requests from our office. We would ask for assistance from Communications with the news release, outreach, event promotion, special events with parks and recreation, the use of tables, tents, chairs, and A-frame signs, and from Community Services, access to the Canutio Community Center and potentially to the dumpster, just in case there's pet waste so that we can have easy access for disposal. And then we did reach out to Canutio Middle School to request that we use the parking lot adjacent to the facility in case we need overflow parking. And that is, that concludes my presentation. Crystal Reyes is here as well. I'm not sure if she wants to contribute anything, but we respectfully request the approval and authorization for this event.
Very comprehensive, Commissioner, really.
Hi, good morning, Judge Commissioners. Crystal Reyes, Interim Director for your Animal Welfare Department. First and foremost, thank you, Commissioner Coronado, and the community members of Precinct Four for coming together and requesting this type of event. It was very disheartening in 2024 when I attended the town hall. Difference between other precincts is they didn't even know we existed, much less knew about the resources that we had to offer. So them asking for us to be able to put something together to open up the resources to this community, I am very grateful for the invitation. Our department is very eager to attend to this. Just as a background, we're still doing our microchip events. Right now, Precinct One is killing it with, I think we had 250 microchips issued. We're pending on Precinct Two on Saturday for Escarate, but Precinct Four, we only had about 40 microchips issued. So you inviting us to be able to offer all of these services to the community so that they know that we're here to help, it's just incredible. So thank you very much to you, to Mari, for putting this together.
Thank you. Appreciate your additional comments. Thank you.
May we have a motion to approve as requested? We have a motion from Commissioner Coronado, a second from Commissioner Stoudt. The voting is open. Are we able to vote, Commissioner Holguin?
It shows green.
Oh, I apologize. We're not seeing that on our end, Commissioner. Thank you so much. The motion carries.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. We really appreciate this. It's going to be a really great event, and it's sorely needed awareness and services out there.
The next item is item nine, County Administration. 9A, receive a presentation, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the 89th Texas Legislative Session and the work done on behalf of the El Paso County to advance its legislative agenda and value statement.
Buenos dias. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Elisa Tamayo, Government Telefirst Manager. Today, we have our special guests, our consultants from Austin. They're here to provide the, like, a legislative update about our legislative priorities and everything that happened during session. So I'll let them introduce themselves and go over the slides.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Jacqueline Uresti, Managing Partner at Phillips Uresti Meacham Partners. I'm joined by Michael Pacheco, Senior Consultant with the firm. I just wanted to make sure that I know how to use this. I guess it just goes forward. Just to double check here. Thank you, Judge Samaniego and Commissioners. We really appreciate y'all inviting us to join you here in your hometown of El Paso and to meet with you and provide a legislative briefing for many of the teams. I do want to start with thanking the County Administration team and the GR team, Betsy, Melissa, and Elisa. I think y'all know they do a great job of not just representing you here in El Paso, but representing y'all in Austin as well. I also want to thank the County Attorney Team. They are just absolutely amazing and experts in each of their respective fields. They were not just an asset on the county priorities, but an asset really on some of the statewide bills that they worked on. And I'd like to call out Aaron Setliff and Eric Morales, and of course, Christina herself, who went and testified as well this session. And then finally, the Legislative Delegation, who I know all of y'all know well, and didn't only advocate for the county priorities, but also advocated on budgetary items, and so they worked really hard on those state items. I think y'all know y'all have a very effective and good delegation working on y'all's behalf. So I really do want to call them out and say thank you for that. And it wasn't an easy session. I think, if y'all remember, when we first started, there was a speaker's race that started in the House, which is very unusual. And so it was one that kind of started slow, at least on the House side, one that did create delays in terms on the House side forming committees and getting to floor activity on the House side, where the Senate started very quickly, as it typically does. And so I really just want to go over the, what we're going to go over today before Michael kicks it off, but we'll give a brief overview. We will do some major bill highlights. I think that Elisa also did something on Sunny Die that went over some of the bills that y'all have been monitoring. Budget highlights, which I think most of y'all probably already have a good idea of some of the budgetary items that are particularly in y'all's precincts. And then we'll go over the county legislative priorities and then looking forward, and then, of course, any questions that y'all might have.
Good morning, Court, Judge, Commissioners. As Jackie mentioned, my name is Mike Pacheco, Senior Consultant with the firm. Again, thank y'all very much for everything this session. It was great. Just to give you all kind of a big overview of where we are, I know Elisa has already given you guys a lot of these kind of top-line numbers. And as Jackie mentioned, this session was a hard one. They seem to only be getting harder with each passing year. In addition to being a new speaker and kind of the delay that that brings, this session also saw the most amount of bills filed that we have ever seen by several hundred. That's also what causes a huge delay in things. It just really bogs everything down. At the end of the day, they ended up passing about the same amount of bills, but there being more bills filed, at the end of the day, there's about 5% fewer bills passed. And so there was just much more of a logjam. The other thing that happened this session as well, too, is the first session that we did not see bipartisan chairmanships on the House side. And I think we saw some of the things that came from that kind of happening throughout session as well. We still are in the veto period. The governor has just less than a week. Next Sunday, I believe, is the last day for him to veto bills. And so in terms of the bills that are passed technically is all done. As y'all know, Sunny Die has come, but we still have a few more days before what we may actually see can be enacted and things that come from there. This kind of just gives you a historical overview of the bills passed and where we are. So you can see, we have been on a trend upward, but the amount of legislative days and everything there has not changed. So we're definitely seeing more bills die as a result of that process. These are just some of the bills that were kind of bigger items that took up a lot of the air in the room, or bills that we know y'all were interested in. Just to go over some of them real quick, SB two was the school voucher bill. There will be $1 billion appropriated for families to apply for for their school-aged children to use at private schools or other institutions that they wish. I will say, on the other end, there was a school finance bill that did pass, which was HB two, which is about $8.5 billion more for public education. About half of that money is going to staff and teacher pay raises. I know a lot of people were looking for more funds for the basic allotment, and we didn't really see an increase much there at the end of the day, but at least hopefully our teachers and stuff will be better taken care of and help the school systems out on that end. SB four, which is the huge tax break kind of bill, there were a handful of property tax breaks that passed. This one will just basically increase what folks can exempt on their homestead when they do their property taxes each year. It increased it to 140 for most homeowners, but seniors will now be able to write up up to $200,000. And there is a handful of other property tax bills that passed as well that will bring tax relief to folks, but we also know that that puts a lot of local entities in peculiar predicaments, given that, you know, the tax base is important to make sure that you guys can provide the services that are needed to those folks that live in our communities. SB seven was a water infrastructure bill. This one as well will... This one as well will provide more funds for water infrastructure projects. It basically just puts more money in the pot for counties to go after or entities to go after as well. So while not any direct kind of benefits there, at least there will be more dollars for each governmental entity to go after. I'll turn it over to Jackie now to talk about some of the other bills as well.
I think you'll know SB eight was the 287G, the requirement for 287G requirements. I know that we talked a little bit in the back with some of the other county teams. I really do want to make a shout out to Elisa, who worked really hard with MAUC and the other counties to try to get amendments to mitigate harm on SB eight. Y'all should be proud that El Paso County was definitely in those conversations. There was some House amendments that were made on the floor. Not all of them survived conference committee, but one of them that did survive was increasing the amount of grants that the counties are eligible for. So specifically on SB eight, the grants can go up to 140,000 based on your population. For El Paso County, it would be 120,000 because y'all are just under a million people for the county. And it would be allowable expenses would only be anything that the federal government does not already reimburse you for. So I know that we were talking in the back with one of, on just kind of how y'all get reimbursed from the jail, if it's, if they come in through ICE. I know this would specifically be for OLS detained people that are detained under OLS. So SB eight did pass. It has not been signed by the governor yet. I do think we expect that they will do some type of bill signing in the new future. We will, you know, as soon as we hear that, we'll let y'all know as well. I don't know if y'all have any questions on SB eight.
Jackie, I'm going to interrupt, but I don't have questions on SB eight, but I think it's a good, it's a good opportunity to raise the issue. I think Betsy was, maybe other members of the court were contacted by Congresswoman Escobar this weekend because there's a federal reconciliation process that's going on right now. And I think Representative Chip Roy from Texas, on the House side, added an amendment that passed on the House, and now it's going to be voted on the Senate side. And John Cornyn has an amendment that would reimburse Texas for Operation Lone Star expenditures. And I wanted to see if we could direct our staff to write a letter to Cornyn's office and advocating for them to give that directly to counties instead of through the state, like, kind of like they did with ARPA funding. Because if it goes to the state, I doubt Governor Abbott's going to give us, you know, the $40 million that we're out for Operation Lone Star costs. And so I think, I think that's, what do we need to do to make sure that that happens? That we can, so we, because I think we need to send that letter as soon as possible because I think the vote's going to be happening this week.
Commissioner, and would the, would the request only be, so what I understood was possibly to ask that in addition to, you know, if, that's fine if they want to reimburse the state, but that counties also have access to funding to reimburse themselves, to not have to go through the state, or regardless of procedure, that there also be funds to reimburse county governments for their expenses due to border enforcement.
Correct. And as a follow-up, I did, from what we discussed, Betsy, I did talk to Ana Garcia this morning from Cornyn's office. And then we scheduled something for this afternoon, but I agree with Commissioner Stout about the importance of that letter.
Okay, so maybe this afternoon, Judge, after you speak with her, we could see if there's any elements that she provides that we could be sure to include in a formal written letter on behalf of the court?
Judge, Commissioners?
Hello.
Hi.
Is that our county attorney on the line?
Yes, that's me. Christina Sanchez, El Paso County Attorney. I just wanted to remind the Court that I did send a letter on y'all's behalf a couple of weeks ago. You all should have received a copy of that at your direction for that same issue. So I'll work with Betsy to reconcile the letters, to make sure that we are addressing either the same thing or adding some additional information there. And then just for a point of clarification, the signatories on that letter would be your county administrator?
I think it would be on behalf of the Court, and so I think it'd be wise to have the judge.
Okay.
Fine.
All right. So just want to make sure that we have that on the record. Okay. Thank you, Betsy. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you.
I think the other thing to add here, since they started funding border security through the state budget, this was, I'm pretty sure, the first biennium that they actually reduced funding. And my understanding is that they did that in mind with, that the federal government is gonna, I think they're expecting that there's going to be some reimbursement. So they did cut border security funding in the budget this session. So that's just enough way as well. I don't know if there was any more questions on SB eight. Okay, so the next thing is bail reform. I'm sure y'all have been following it. There was five bills that were filed this session. The El Paso delegation was actually very involved, particularly Speaker Moody was involved in negotiations to try to mitigate some of the harm in the bail reform bill. So there were some that passed, specifically the three that are up there, SB nine, SB forty, and SJR five, that y'all will have on the November ballot. But I did want to highlight these because they do deal with changes to how local governments can fund charitable bail organizations. And so if y'all have done that in the past, there would be more requirements. And in some situations, there would be a ban, depending on what the person was charged with. And so, do you want, those did pass. The two that failed, though, were SJR one and SJR eighty-seven. SJR one specifically would have denied bail to persons who were undocumented for certain crimes. And SJR eighty-seven would have denied bail if somebody already had a felony, regardless if it was the same type of charge or not. And so those did fail to pass. And so we do expect that they'll continue to try those next sessions. So we probably will want to continue to watch those and changes of bail. SB seventeen, we hadn't really talked about this bill in the past. This is the one that limits requirements on being able to purchase real property if you are either domiciled or from particular countries. The reason that I wanted to bring this up is there was an amendment that got put on at the House and survived in conference committee. Originally, it was only countries that were identified as a national security threat at the national level. And so that was limited to Iran, North Korea, Russia, and China. They added a provision that said that the governor can add in other countries as designated. And I know that there are some concern, I mean, they do say that it has to be in consultation with other entities and DPS and Homeland Security experts, but I think there are some concerns of like what other countries could be added into that prohibition. So I just wanted to give y'all notice that that was changed and added in conference committee. HB twenty-one is Housing Finance Corporation, so HFCs. They didn't do a full ban. I know there was some worry that they would ban HFCs. They just really did some reforms, and then they banned traveling HFCs. So has to be within the jurisdiction, or at least have permission for the jurisdiction if you are operating outside of your own county. And then I'll pass it back over to Mike. I know that for model subdivision rules, there were quite a few bills this session.
Yeah, so we know that y'all have been looking at the MSR very closely. They're very important to the El Paso community and a lot of the folks along the border region. This is one particularly, too. I'd like to give a shout out to Eric Morales with the county attorney's office. He really is kind of respected across the state and known as the MSR expert. You know, he was in the room, I won't say how many years back, but some years back, when a lot of them, when a lot of these rules were first written and implemented. There was one bill that passed. It was Representative Gamas's bill from down in the valley. This was a bill that y'all, as a county, and we were involved with for several months prior to session as well. Cameron County has just had some longstanding issues with some of the MSR rules. It was our understanding through the county attorney's office that they just interpret some of the stuff differently. And so they wanted a carve out to do some of the things differently. Representative Gamas's office worked with us and other stakeholders, and Eric was very involved with making sure that the language was bracketed to just Cameron County. And so that bill did get through, but it was something that everyone felt that we can live with and really won't affect the spirit of MSRs at the end of the day, but just kind of give some more room for Cameron County to how they issue different permits and stuff while they're trying to develop certain parts of their community. There were two other bills, particularly dealing with MSRs, that we kept a very close eye on that did not make it through the process. Of course, with all of these MSR bills, there was concern that at any point in time, certain amendments or language could be added that kind of expands them. And so those, the Guillen Bill 2384 never really got any legs. The 1708 by Senator Adam Inahosa was a very small bill, and we worked with his office on trying to change some language as well, too. And they were very open to moving stuff around, but there was a lot of back and forth kind of at the end of the day, and that bill did not make it through the process. So that's where we stood with the MSR stuff. But it's something that some other folks have gained more interest in over the years looking at these MSR rules. And so it's something that we're ready for and expect to continue to be talked about throughout the interim and at least for the next few sessions. So that's an MSR update. And I'll turn it back over to Jackie to finish some of these other bills.
A lot of these are the land use and, you know, county revenue bills that died that were, you know, this wasn't just an El Paso County thing. This was all counties were very worried about these bills. And so I think y'all were following some of them. Senate Bill 1024 and HB nineteen, issuance of COs and then issuance of bonds. Both failed. One passed the Senate and died in the House, which was an effort. There was a lot of counties involved, and it was a bipartisan effort of counties that were worried about that bill. HB nineteen actually didn't get a ton of traction. We were more worried that they would break it off into amendments and try to get that moving, but that did end up dying in the chairman's own committee. It died in ways and means. HB twenty-three and HB twenty-eight fifty-eight, which is the preemption bill. Harris's bill was third-party review. I think y'all may remember this. This was the shot clock bill. And shout out to the counties and the cities. They got tons of amendments on HB twenty-three and put up a big fight on the House floor where it was a bipartisan effort that counties were just not comfortable with builders being able to go around the county and city process on some of these new developments. So it did not pass. I do expect that we'll see another reiteration of that next session. I think the hope is definitely that the counties and the cities can be in the conversation during the interim before the actual bill is filed. So some of those amendments that they fought to get in on the floor can actually mitigate harm in the beginning if they do, if they do get traction. So those, I don't know if y'all had any questions on any of the other bills. We have, we brought up, oh, yeah.
Question, how much was the actual water?
For the water infrastructure?
So for the water fund, I actually have it on this slide. It was 2.5 billion was in the supplemental budget for the Texas Water Fund. So those are things where y'all get water development grants. There is money there. And then for the bill, it's a $20 billion investment over the next 20 years. And so that, if voters approve it, it would be $1 billion a year over the next 20 years.
Is that also part of what they're doing for the entire state infrastructure there, or is that a separate deal?
My understanding is it's, it's part of it.
This is it?
Yeah, this is it. So it's the 2.5 into the fund directly, and then it's this 20-year investment.
Yeah. Well, at least we're getting some of it. But my understanding with Commissioner, and I met with the Water Development Board, Commissioner Butler, when was that, about three, four months ago, right?
Chamber days, right? It was a good meeting.
And our understanding from them that the need is more like 50 to 100 billion, right?
Yes. Yes. The, I will say, what was envisioned in the beginning of session was definitely pared down by the end of session in the proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Safe to say. But the budget overall was $338 billion for the two years. It's just a 5% increase. I think y'all do know that we went in with a $24 billion surplus. Michael mentioned some of this, but 51 billion for property tax cuts. Most of that is to extend the homestead exemption that they provided last session. That gets us from the 100,000 homestead exemption to 140,000. It's also for compression, as well as some for small business property tax cuts. So it was a little bit of meshing the House bill and the Senate bill, but it was primarily what the Senate bill looked like in the property tax.
But those are, sorry to, but those are all reimbursements and property taxes for school, because it's a school, right? The school district's home, the homestead exemption is on the school.
Right.
Not, not the county, right? That's not money that's coming to counties. That's money that's going to the school districts, right?
Correct. Yes. Or that's my understanding, but yeah. I do not want to pretend to be a property tax expert. The 8.5 billion for public schools, as Michael said, includes the teacher pay raises. It also includes funding for special education, as well as a $55 basic allotment increase, which was less than what the House version, I think the House version was close to $400, and it got pared down to $55 in the basic allotment. $1 billion for the voucher program that was passed. And then we just talked about the water fund. It did get increased in both the supplemental. So those should be in the fund immediate because the supplemental is for this fiscal year. And then the rest that would be on the November ballot would be looking forward.
And then I think y'all have heard, you know, this is a big shout out to the delegation and where it kind of really shows, having a senior, senior members part of the delegation, Chairwoman Gonzalez, Speaker Moody, particularly where the budget stuff really comes to fruition, having members like that in their positions really goes a long way. But it is very much a team effort. You know, members walk around on the floor, other members of the Appropriations and Finance Committee asking people with the delegation, hey, is this important? Is this, is this helpful to you? And so y'all can see on the right-hand column, this is what, some of the stuff that El Paso is coming away with this year, which I know are things that are really big to y'all and that you've been working on for some time. I won't read them all, but those are, I think, some really big wins and things to be proud of. So thank you to the delegation for working on that, that stuff. Real quick, just back, I will say to you for the property tax stuff and some of those things like that, so y'all are aware, it was also this session that the most amount of constitutional amendments was, were passed since 2003. There were 17. So there's, come this November, there's going to be 17 initiatives on the ballot for statewide voter approval. And a lot of those do deal with taxes. But since we are on the budget, too, I'll say, you know, one of the things that we know is really important to y'all, and we did work on quite a bit, but it, it didn't grow as much as we wanted to, was some of the veteran exemption reimbursement things. And there are some things that expand that program a little bit on the ballot coming this November. And so I think we're, you know, this is the time to really start kind of massaging that issue with key members that, hey, you know, especially in a community like El Paso, that serves a lot of military families, you know, I think we're probably disproportionately affected. And so making sure that those reimbursement dollars are there are a big deal. So that's.
Because I think Betsy, like, we've calculated, it's like 4 to 5 million dollars that the county in revenue that the county will not receive because of that, because of the veterans' exemption, right?
I apologize. Barbara is not here, but she could tell us the full amount. But the issue is also, I understand they didn't increase the amount, but they allowed more communities to participate, which further sends the fund.
Right. I think they, the bill that passed was a bill that said, so it's right now certain entities that qualify, certain counties, and now those counties and municipalities that are adjacent to.
Those counties.
So now it's, it's more people fighting for the same dollars. And so it's, it's actually a negative impact.
So I know on the House side, I think there was $50 million more in the pot, and the Senate did not increase that amount. And so we are hoping, we now see that there is a will to do it in the House. And so we're hoping that that will come to fruition next session. Also, the other thing to add is that it will be a House bill. The budget switches chambers every session. And so it was a Senate bill this session. It'll be a House bill next session, so.
I'm sorry. This is Donna Teague from the auditor's office. I'm here at the office trying to finish up some financial reports. But that is true. As more people add to what the funding, even if the pot's increased, it gives us less and less from every time we apply for funds. And it's the same thing that happened with the SCAP program by the federal government. The more people that get in it, the less we get.
Donna, do you know how much we were short, though, when we applied? How much the funding was short?
Oh, not offhand, I don't know. I can look that up.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I think by the formula, we should be getting like 6 million, but we only got a million or something like that.
Correct.
Correct.
It was close to seven, I think, or something. Yes, sir.
Yes. Yeah. And you're correct. It's going to go down all the time as more people get involved with it, because they're not just sticking it with counties related to the veterans. The surrounding ones are getting in it also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. County legislative priorities. So we'll get into the county priorities. And so let's start with the ones that, that passed. SB 1002, it passes HB 334 by Blanco and Representative Ordas, Senator Blanco and Representative Ordas, which allows the county to establish an employee family leave pool. It's effective immediately. It's already been signed by the governor. So we are really appreciative of Representative Ordas for working on that. And her. And her team, her team was very active. The other bill that we would like to highlight is HB 1863, which was authored by Speaker Moody and Senator Zaffarini. It didn't actually pass as a standalone bill. We were able to get that into Senator Hinojosa's bill from the Valley, Juan Chui Hinojosa's bill, and Representative Ann Johnson's bill on the House. As an amendment, Speaker Moody added that in the final days of session, so we were really happy to be able to get that compromise language on family protective orders. So you may be familiar with this. Some of the concern with family protective orders is that they potentially, they're limited to two years, and so you, they could expire if there is a divorce happening or a parent, a parental suit happening, or there is some type of criminal case pending, if there was domestic violence case pending, and that the protective order could expire before those cases were finalized. And so the amendment would essentially say that two years doesn't start to toll until those cases are completed, so that they still have two years of protection after the suit is final. So that's what Speaker Moody's amendment did. It was passed. It's been sent to the governor. We, it has not been signed yet, so we're waiting for the veto period, which is on June 22nd. So we haven't gotten any indication that there would be any problems with the bill, but we always just want to make that caveat of the veto period.
These next few bills are bills that went pretty far through the system, and for one reason or another, just didn't quite make it. The first one is SB 2105, which was a county attorney bill particularly to kind of help with the human trafficking issues at lodging establishments. This one was kind of, we stepped on the brakes a little bit for some time period, just because with the new administration at the federal level and some of the executive orders, there was some concern about if this bill would actually, if it would end up being a detriment to the county or helpful. But that stuff got worked out, and then once we kind of started moving this bill again, it was late in session, and it ended up dying on a House calendar. So it made it pretty far through the system, but just died due to the timeframe rule set in place by the bodies. The next one, 1431, this is allowing counties or municipalities to establish drug court programs. This one, we know is a really big deal to Chief Medina here in El Paso. And Representative Ann Johnson out of Houston worked really hard. We knew this bill was going to have some issues on the Senate side due to some language in it. We did make changes. We offered some additional changes, and at the end of the day, we just couldn't get the senators as a whole to agree that this bill would be helpful in a manner that they found suitable for their liking. The next one, 1166, relating to the authority of certain counties to regulate junkyards. This one, I believe after some conversations with Chief Esparsa and other folks in the community, this one we ended up not really pursuing. So this one, the bill did not move anywhere. There were a couple of different versions filed early in session. As y'all remember, when y'all were coming up with the priorities and whatnot, we didn't, we weren't fully sure on the best way to approach it. But like I said, after certain conversations, we decided that this bill could kind of be handled locally, and so that was the path chosen. So thank you to everyone who worked on that bill and the local ESDs as well, too, for all of their input with that as well.
And I'm sorry, before you go on, Michael. Erica, I'm not sure if you know, or if Christine knows where we are on that. I know we were looking at the types of local orders that we could adopt to deal with some of these issues. Is that something that's going to come back to us in the near future?
Yes, we've been working, our office has been working with Public Works to regulate multiple rounds of that. We've also, just last week, actually met with the Dallas County Attorney's Office to talk about how they implemented their own, so we could get their best practices, and that should be coming back soon.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Glad to hear y'all are working on it, and hopefully, you know, we always think, too, it's best to try to address things locally. So hopefully, we're not still discussing this next session, but of course, there's always that option as well, too. The next bill, Senate Bill 1028, relating to the qualifications for serving as a member of a board for certain muds. This one, I know, was a big deal to folks in particularly Commissioner Holguin's area. The mud in question did have their counsel working pretty hard against the bill, and so that one, there was a lot of conversation happening back and forth. We got some movement in the House late in session, but it just didn't have enough time as well, too, to make it through. And on the Senate side, it definitely probably would have had some bigger issues as well, too, just kind of given the thought, the thought process over on the Senate side and kind of local authority and things like that. But this is something that, of course, we're, you know, know y'all are going to continue to look at during the interim, and we'll see what solutions we can arrive at before next session. The next bill, Senate Bill 1023, the pauper, the pauper bill. Elisa particularly worked very, very, very hard on this one. It moved, it, we really don't know what happened to this, bless you, that was a sneeze. We really don't know kind of what happened to this bill. We were going back and forth on the vote counts. It passed out of committee pretty easily, but there were some more right-leaning groups that put out some alerts against this bill, that they didn't like it. And so that kind of changed the dynamic amongst some Republican senators. And so we spent a lot of time working them, trying to explain to them what was going on. Elisa got very involved with other counties as well, too, because this isn't just an El Paso problem. The cost of disposing the bodies has increased across, for everybody. And so she was very helpful in getting other counties to call their local state senators and be like, hey, this bill is a good bill. It will also help us. We also changed the bill as well, too. It didn't have any dollars tied to it exactly. It was just going to create the program, and we would have figured out the dollars in the future. But that, unfortunately, those changes still weren't enough to get enough senators on board. Would like to thank Senator Blanco's office, too. His office was very engaged, and this office going back and forth on trying to get this one passed. But this one, by the time it got through committee, it, I guess I'll say a little bit, too, died on Senate intent calendar. A bill has to be on the intent calendar two days. It was put on, it was put off, it was put on, it was put off, and the Senate doesn't really act on anything unless they're fully confident in their vote count. And so that's why this one, we kind of went back and forth. We thought we had the votes. It would be on, and then it would be off the next day. So know that this one is also a big deal to the county, and so look forward to continuing to work with this one and trying to grow the coalition and making other counties aware that this is a good bill for many counties across Texas.
The only thing that I would add on that bill is, this session, it's not a, it's not a rule, but there was an informal rule that bills needed to get 2/3 of the support for the Republican caucus. So that meant you could only lose five votes on the floor. So even though you had the majority of the Senate, you needed to have 2/3 of the Republican caucus supporting your bill for you to move forward. And it wasn't a hard rule. It really depended, sometimes on partisan lines, whether that bill was going to be considered or not. The other informal rule was that if a bill on the House side came over with less than 100 votes, you were going to have a hard time getting that bill even heard on the Senate side. And so those, again, are not rules that are written in the actual Senate and House rules. Those were just informal rules that were being followed this session. So difficult to work with sometimes. I do want to talk about some of the others. The parkland dedication bill was left pending in committee. Representative Wally ended up filing that bill for us out of Harris County. I, if we, if the county decides that they want to pursue this bill again, I think some of the feedback that we got was that we would definitely need to put some parameters on what kind of developments they were. You know, for example, is this a develop, you know, would this parkland dedication only be in subdivisions that are 500 homes or more? And kind of put some caps. I'm sure y'all know this is not the first session that there hasn't really been a will to expand county authority, especially if it's not, doesn't have more of a definition to it. And so I do think if that's something that y'all want to pursue, we probably would want to look at other cities that already do this and see if we can match those parameters on parkland, limited to certain amounts of subdivisions, and just considering those. They do not want to just give blanket county authority to do it. In terms of Senate Bill 899, which was updating the calculations, we briefly discussed this. I think the thought was, we wanted to be able to include the surviving spouses in the calculation. But really, I think what the, what we have now determined in talking to the Compteur's Office and other counties is, we really just need more money in the pot because you're not even getting what you're fully eligible for right now because there's not enough money in the pot. So I do think that, you know, that, getting that accounted for, possibly, and you know, we don't want to limit other entities from being eligible, but it's very difficult when you're making more people eligible if you're not increasing the money that's available. SB 2022 by Representative Blanco, I think y'all are familiar, is with the county scuff law bill. I think this was the third session that it has been filed. It is having difficulty in the Senate, and so I know that we probably would have to discuss. I know there was more amendments made to the language. I think there's some concern about going after people who are not able to pay some of these bills. I know that the county has been very diligent in trying to make payment plans and payment plans that are affordable, but I think that the fee bills have had a difficulty in moving. Senate Bill 2604 and HB 5335, which was the water connection notification bill. So this one would, I think y'all remember, you know, some of the concerns that people are selling property, and they're saying, you know, the water line's right there, and they're not notifying them, or they're not notifying that it's not actually connected, or that it is going to cost a significant amount of money to connect those. There, you know, we have gotten pushback from builders on these bills, and so I think trying to work with them in the interim to find out if there is any type of middle ground. And that was also on the parkland. We got pushback from the Builders Association of how we could work with them in the interim in trying to get some compromise language on those bills, if y'all would like to pursue them for next session. And I think those are all of the priorities. I do want to flag some stuff in terms of looking forward, even though we're two weeks out as of today. I think some of y'all have probably already heard, there are discussions of a special session. One of the issues that is coming up is congressional, possibility of congressional redistricting. The other thing that has been brought up is taxpayer-funded lobbyists by local entities. It has also been brought up by some of the senators and has been hinted at in some of the governor's interviews. So I just do want to flag for y'all that they're already discussing the potential of a special session. I think the other thing that should also, I know that y'all had the Dreamers here today, which was amazing because of what is happening with in-state tuition. I do know that a lot of the legislators are figuring out if there's a way to engage. And so in-state tuition, right now, the Attorney General Paxton made an agreement with the DOJ that would not allow our universities and our community colleges to offer in-state tuition to people who are DACA or Texas residents and qualified under, graduating from a Texas high school. So I know that y'all are aware of that, but I did want to let y'all know that we are watching that as well. And I think the last thing is the veto period is June 22nd, so we are watching for that as well. So with that, we would open up for questions, if y'all have anything else.
I do have a question. Thank you, thank you so much for the presentation. I didn't see it on the list of bills, but the tire recycling grant program that we were trying to--
So that bill, you know, that bill's very important to Chairwoman Gonzalez. It did get through the House. It did not make it through the Senate as well, but that bill, she got through the House this time pretty quickly, but it died in the Senate.
Yeah, unfortunately, it was, it did get out really soon. Actually, y'all's, the one by Representative Johnson, I don't know if y'all know, I mean, I know the judges, Representative Johnson, who ended up doing a couple of things for us, y'all met with her on Chamber Day, which is, her chief of staff is Lena Hidalgo's former chief of staff, so Brooke was very helpful. But they got out of the House early, and they held on to a few hundred House bills and just did not refer them until about a week and a half before the deadline on the Senate side, unfortunately. And Representative Gonzalez's bill, I think, was in that batch.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Lena Hidalga. I don't remember. Yeah.
We knew.
Did I say it wrong, Lena? I said Lena Hidalga.
I don't know if anybody else has any questions, but I just want to thank you all for the work that was done in the session, and Elisa as well. I know it's a pretty heavy lift. We had a, we had a lot of bills to work on and a lot of defense to be playing, which is usually the case, right? These days, when it comes to attacks on local control and, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to continue to talk about the unfunded mandates that the state approves every legislative session. 55% of our budget goes to unfunded mandates directly, and then another 15% for support services for those, for those services that are mandated. And so, and we can calculate up to probably 65 or 70% of our county's budget is spent on things that the state tells us we have to spend, but they don't give us money for. Every single fee that we collect, they skim, they take, they take money back to the state, you know, whether it's vehicle registration fees or court fees. And as we, you know, we, we did not come out unscathed when it comes to more unfunded mandates, like the increase in salaries for judges, which is going to affect our budget. And, you know, we've talked a little bit about the, some of the exemptions that are, that were not being reimbursed, reimbursed for. So, you know, I want to reiterate to the public that we're doing as much as we can as we go through our budget cycle this summer to, to not try to burden taxpayers even further with additional taxes. We're asking our staff to, and our departments, to reduce their budget, operational budgets by 5% across the board and working on other strategies to, like hiring freezes or pushing back hiring. But a lot of this is being caused by the increases that the state government is burdening us with. And so we need to continue to talk about that. And, but I really appreciate all the work that our lobby team did, and Elisa, working with the Conference of Urban Counties and all the GR people at the Conference of Urban Counties. I mean, Adam Haynes with the Conference of Urban Counties called me a number of times and said, hey, Elisa and your team are really kicking butt. They're doing a lot of, a lot of work. They're getting, getting into people's offices and making sure that the legislators are well-informed about our priorities and why we need these things. And so I really want to thank, thank our team, our county attorneys also for their work that they, you know, the time that they spent at the Capitol this session. It's never, it's never fun to have to go and, you know, wait for 10 hours to speak for two minutes and then be, you know, referred to in a condescending manner or be, or be talked down to sometimes when you're sitting in these committees. And so it's, it's been a great team effort, and I'm really proud of the work that El Paso County was able to do this time with our, with our consultants and with Elisa.
Yes, y'all's, and I will say, I will double Elisa Hustles in the Capitol. She's all over. She's not afraid to ask for anything on y'all's behalf, trust me.
Yeah. Thank you to Elisa and to all of the departments, too, across the board. We know it's definitely a team effort, so to each one of you, your staffs, and then all the departments within the county as well, to thank you for all of your assistance and help.
Responding to emails very late at night.
We really thank you, and Elisa, thank you, and always the additional support from Commissioner Stout. I know he's extremely helpful.
I, I think, I agree with Commissioner Stout. Thank you all. Thank you, Elisa, for all your hard work. I also know that, that our delegation did a lot of defensive work--
Yeah, Rep. Gonzalez.
--in trying to mitigate some of the more harmful legislation, especially to counties. So I, I hope that they know how much we appreciate. Although, you know, our legislative wins were smaller, I think the work that they did to block and to try to prevent bad bills from passing is also notable. I, I would ask that you help us, and maybe we can, I know we're going to have a one-on-one meeting soon, but based on, you know, the updates and, and what you saw as, as potential legislation that'll move forward or come back to us next session, how can we start to build that legislative agenda now, based on, you know, what we tried to get past, what was close, maybe some of the things that we know is on the horizon that we'd like to prevent? And then if there's anything that we can do based on what, what we weren't able to accomplish this session in the interim? So any legislators we should start meeting with, any organizations we should start talking to, especially with land use issues? Start, start working on those strategies now so that, over the next year, as we build up that agenda, we'll, we'll have, had those conversations already.
Definitely, Commissioner Butler, I, I agree with you 100%. There was some that, you know, compromise language came out late, but now that we have that compromise language, I definitely think start meeting with those stakeholders in the interim to see that the compromise language still holds into next session. interim to see that the compromise language still holds into next session if it's something that y'all want to pursue. I think the other thing, one of the conversations that we were having earlier, you know, SB 8 I know is a difficult bill, but there is a lot of rulemaking that's going to be made. The Comptroller's Office is charged with that, and I think getting some of the counties that are in a unique position like your county in the conversations and so that we can set up meetings, whoever would like to be in those conversations with the Comptroller's Office. And just as an example, there is going to be a lot of rulemaking in the interim, and I think if we can be in those conversations in the beginning, we can mitigate more harm. Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just going to add to that point, Commissioner Butler, back about our delegation. You may recall, the court has asked us to be sure to provide a thank you letter, and we're also, while Elisa's here this week, coordinating a small token of appreciation being delivered to each of them with that letter, and a card will have you all sign today.
Thank you, Betsy.
And thanks to Betsy and Melissa as well. I mean, for, for your, for your help, and I know, I know that y'all did a lot during the session as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
And I apologize, because I thought we had informed the court, we're going to go till 1 o'clock, and then we'll break for lunch at 1:00. Then you asked.
Yeah, we have, Mr., I think Mr. Davis's presentation is up next, and then we also have our friends from UTEP to talk about the.
We'll try to do both before the 1 o'clock break.
Can we do those two before the 1 o'clock? Yep.
Thank you.
We will take no action for item 9A. Next is item 10, Economic Development. 10A, receive a presentation from Mr. Mike Davis, Representative of the East Central Coalition, ECC, regarding the publication of the inaugural Black El Paso History Tour Guide brochure, planned Juneteenth celebration events, and the outreach strategy for the brochure's public launch.
Hi, good afternoon, or, yeah, good afternoon, Commissioners and Judge. Cynthia Renteria with Economic Development. I'm here to introduce Mr. Davis, who many of you have met, who will speak to you about a project that aims to highlight El Paso's black history and sites of memory. This project was a collaboration among the East Central Coalition, El Paso Community Foundation, El Paso Historical, El Paso County Historical Society, and others. He will also speak to the organization's broader plan to highlight this history and some upcoming events. I do very briefly want to thank Roberto for all his support in the department and for the support of the County Historical Commission, as well as my colleagues in the Economic Development Department, and a big shout out to purchasing, both the buyer, Patricia Williams, and Christian Soto, who receives our, our orders when they arrive, for getting this one out on time and in time for Juneteenth. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Davis.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Renteria. And thank you again for allowing me to present, to give this presentation. Thank you, Judge, and Commissioners. We're about to embark upon what I consider, or many of us consider, most, one of the most historical events that we've done in the history of El Paso. This is the first black history tour guide that's ever been published. It took us approximately two years to get it done, and our release date, to celebrate that release date, this week, the formal one is on the 21st of June. You have a copy of the invitation. It will be held at Mount Zion Baptist Church, 3400 Wyoming Avenue, starting at 2:00. And everybody, I expect everybody, Betsy, to be there, okay? So I expect everybody in the city, county, to please be there and see this historic event. Let me just start off a little bit, because y'all have heard me before, and I've given a presentation to the, make sure I get this right. I've given an introduction about Eastside Central Coalition before. We're a nonprofit organization, started about a year and a half, two years ago, and our focus is on, as I given in our mission statement, when we, when we went after the EPA dollars, is to rebirth a particular district, what we call the Eastside Central District, which centered from Paciano up to Five Points, Alameda Piedras. And our mission goal, and if you remember, Judge, when you met the little five, five feet two lady, our mission statement was, as she told us, I want you to rebirth this community. So we focused all of our initiatives on this type of action. This initiative today is one of those tools, one of those initiatives that we're using to do just that, okay? And so I think it's important that you know that right from the beginning, because this is just one initiative of many countless ones that we will be doing, working in coalition with different organizations across the city, especially in the Alameda Piedras corridor. That's our focus. Many of you know I was born and raised in that area, lived at Taze Projects, went to Bell School, went to Lincoln School, graduated from Austin before I went off to college. So my connection is still here. And of course, turning the Estes Eastside Barber Shop into a Black Living Museum became one of those initiatives that recognized the efforts of not only her, but also all of those from 1850 that you see in that, that tour guide, to the day that she retired, September 2022, all of the shoulders that we stand on, the contributions, the Black El Passos and what they've given to the county and the city throughout the years, both military as well as civilian. So this is really a focus for us, work together to find paths in order for us to rebirth our community. You can see, as I've already outlined in, in chart number four, exactly that vision statement. There's some of the things that we've already done. The Eastside Central Coalition working in partnership, notice I continue to talk about partnership, worked with the El Paso Museum of History when we initiated and worked on the Steel Re Rise. It's, it was a successful exhibit, well-received throughout the city, county, and has been recognized everywhere. But along with that, we continued with additional other programs, educational programs that we thought were so important that we, we stay involved and work with our community. Then, in preparation for the tour guide, we initiated the first black walking tour of our black business district. Now, many of you wonder what I mean by black business district. Just like Tulsa, Oklahoma, we too had our Black Wall Street. And that this black district, black business district came from Second Ward, across Paciano, through to Alameda Piedras, up to Five Points. In that area alone, we had more than 60 black businesses. Those businesses were interrupted and many of them gone away because of the introduction of Interstate 10 in the 1950s, late 50s, and 60. But we captured that, and you can see that in that historical guide, the contributions of those businesses. Many of them are even recognized in the Green Book. And if any of you seen the Green Book movie, you would recognize the, the theory and the process that was used. So this is the way for us to capture that history. We actually been approved by the Texas Historical Commission to set up, to have and install, hopefully before the end of the year, a historical mark right there on the corner of Alameda Piedras, recognizing those 50-plus black businesses and organizations. And that'd be another unique event, that particular time. We established the Black Business Living Museum. On the, on the 28th of February, we opened up with a formal ceremony on that, and the Black Business Living Museum is a part of the tour guide. But what I think is going to become more important, as we start looking at the future, is, we had two initiatives we implemented this year. The Eastside Central Coalition submitted almost nine historical black, historical markers. They were done strategically, tactically, around the area, with the intent, going into next year, we start working on the process to establish that entire area as a historical district. Hard, it's going to be a lot of hard work, but we've already started the process. So I just wanted to make sure people are aware of that as we speak. But let's focus on the tour guide. The tour guide, as you see there, as I mentioned, started about two years ago, with the, with the walking tour, where we identified the black businesses in that particular area. That tour guide allowed us to validate that there was a need to identify and record and keep that history in our archives, and make sure that we use that as a tool to educate our community. But then, what we did on the 28th of February, 2024, we had a tour, got tour of the black historical sites, and we identified over 38 historical sites, just to test the system. Started with one bus and 150 people, and it was actually sold out. Then last year, on the 3rd of February, it grew so well, it was so well-received, that we ended up getting two buses. We had more than 300-plus people attend, and we turned people away. So at that particular point, me being an engineer, I decided those were the things we need to use to verify and validate, is this going to be something that's well-received? It was. What we did, we formalized that process, and if you look at the, the pictures, if you look at the verbiage in there, it is so well-done. Now, I even took this document, soft copied, and sent it around the East Coast, to have different people, like Dr. Birch, the 14th Secretary of the Smithsonian, who founded the Afro-American Museum. He loved it, thought it was well, well-done. The same thing with Dr. Henry Gates up at Harvard, to see if he would like that, he'd like that flyer. So wanted to get the feel from people, not only in the community, but outside the community, how it compared with the rest of the United States. That's, and I'm being very calm about it, but last night, when I saw the hard copy, I was ready to jump out the chair, because that is a heck of a document that you have. It is going to be well-received, and people are going to want to put that in their pocketbook, just like I did, okay, in my corner, and carry it with them or keep that, that document. It's one that, when they go on tour, anybody that comes into the city, parents, family, members, they can actually take that tour individually, or what we're going to do, we're going to formalize this process through the NCC, working with tour companies, have a tour coordinator, coordinators. And what we're going to do is, we're going to push this, because we don't want this sitting on a desk, or placed in somebody's bookshelf. This is going to be a moving document. We're going to use this to reach out to organizations like the NAACP in Texas, or any other different organizations. In fact, I have distribution plan that I will go to a little bit earlier. You will see that I've, we're issuing them out to all those different type of organizations that can reach out to a larger community outside El Paso, and start bringing tour, tourists in to see what we, Black El Paso, has done as part of a diverse community from the 13, the early 1900s to today. So this is why it's so important that this document be pushed, the way we're trying to do this. This is, this is just one of the tools we're going to use to rebirth our community. You can see the timelines and what we're looking at. The starting point for the tour would be the McCall Center. Many of you went on that tour on the, on the 3rd of February. It started in, at the McCall Center, it ended at the McCall Center, but it will visit all of those different sites that, that are on there. It will also be placed on websites, soft sites, so we can get the word out, but the tour coordinators will be the persons that will help us make sure that words get, get out, and then we start bringing people in. We will also reach out to the El Paso Airport and seek to put an exhibit out there as well, and I mentioned that before. So we have a lot of work to do. We got a business plan in place to make this thing happen. We will keep the county, we'll also keep the city informed, but we have gained tremendous support from the county in what we're doing. This would not have happened without the county. Let's just put it where it is, okay? Or as somebody would say, let's put it where the goats can eat it. It would not be here if it wasn't for the county. And, let me back up and add some, one person, who's really been also instrumental in helping us getting this done, and that's Dr. Renteria. Because I reached out to her, and I pushed her quite a bit. We all been reaching out to her and making sure this happens, and she's been right there with us, working side by side. In fact, she's already boxed up the distribution list that you see here, and ready for us to ship it and take it down to our place. And I was kind of surprised this morning when I got to see that. Mind you, the printing, the documents were done on Friday, I mean, last Monday. Delivered on Friday. So we're well, way well ahead of the schedule that I actually published to make sure everything gets on, in place, and ready to start the release of this document. Notice the, the different organizations that we included. Many of those organizations include black churches that are in what we call the Eastside Central Corridor. One church that you don't see in there, but we'll be getting a list, Second Baptist. Second Baptist Church will make sure they get there a lot. I forgot to put that on the, on the table of distribution, okay? NAACP will include theirs. Remember, you just had the resolution this morning. We talked about ICC and many other organizations. We're going to be working closely with them to make sure we're working in collaboration with everything that we're trying to do. Not only today, not only this week, but the entire year. We will start this coalition and continue to grow it. So, once, I had a session last week for three minutes, and I was told that I had to do a presentation from the top floor down to the bottom floor, which we in business would call the elevator pitch. This time, I think I did it a little bit quicker, a little bit over three minutes, but I wanted to make sure that I get everything in. Are there any questions that you may have for us?
This is amazing.
When I saw it.
Beautiful.
Mr. Geronimo Garcia, good lord, he's, he's just tremendous, tremendous. I had to call him.
I've never seen something like this.
And, and the resolution of the pictures, the research, the different sites, you see there, how it's so easily compacted, where we can take it anywhere we want to go. It's just an invaluable tool that the county, the city, has to bring in more tourists, more people into El Paso, and introduce them to what we bring to the table. And as Ms. Estes would say, I can cut anyone's hair. Guess what? The city can introduce themselves to anyone outside and bring them in as well. We can do this. But that tool there start, is a starting point.
And so many of us have so many touchpoints with, with, with everything. I mean, we have, we grew up here.
Absolutely.
From the Crawford Theater to the, all of these things, and it's just.
From the Douglas, Douglas to Taze, to, as we mentioned in the, in the tour, in the tour guide, Club Society. I never knew that one of my mother's, my doctor, our family doctor, Dr. Fred Green Evans' son actually played at Club Society in a band, until his brother told me a year ago.
This is amazing.
But I never thought so.
Great for El Paso, great for tourism.
It is.
Thank you, Dr. Renteria and Roberto, for supporting that.
Thank you very much.
And we should also thank the Historical Commission as well, and El Paso Foundation, because they really, Doc, I mean, Mr. Gary Williams, he worked with me side by side, the El Paso History Museum, El Paso Museum of History, Nora Rose, Erica, Marina, her boss, they were right there with me, and we went through this for months and months and months, trying to get this right.
Congratulations.
Great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next is item 11, Public Works. 11A, receive a presentation and approve and authorize the county judge to sign the First Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding between El Paso County and the University of Texas at El Paso for a community-centered environmental health risk assessment through sequential exploratory design, C-E-H-R-A-S-E-D. No funding is required.
Welcome, Michael.
Thank you, thank you, and good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Michael McElroy, Planning and Development. The item before you is two-pronged in nature. Firstly, is an opportunity to receive a presentation and an update on an initiative you funded last year in August for a community health risk assessment, and then additionally, for your consideration, extending that memorandum of agreement, rather, understanding with the University of Texas at El Paso to complete this health risk assessment. So with that, we do have UTEP here to present on this, and I'd like to welcome them. So with that, we do have UTEP here to present on this, and I'd like to welcome them.
And real, real quick, real quick, um, before, before we get to presentation, I just wanted to, to make some comments. Um, uh, as we know, we, you know, we, we first put this study on the agenda after hearing, um, community members, um, you know, talking about their concerns i- in this area, and so I really want to thank the court for supporting the item and also allowing it to, to move forward, and I really want to thank, uh, Michael McElroy for his stewardship and, uh, of the contract and the study team for your commitment to public health and, uh, your method, methodological approach, uh, as these members of the public who, you know, these are members of the public who have helped guide the direction of the study. Um, as we're going to hear from the presentation, we started with, uh, hearing the public, you know, they wanted information, but in order to get that information, the study team had to go a little bit deeper into, into listening to the public. So the first phase of that has ended, making this a really good time to provide an update, uh, as, as we entered the second phase. And, and at the end, you know, we should expect a set of actionable recommendations that would help us to protect the health of our, our constituents, which I think is one of our most important duties as, as a Commissioners Court. So I just want to thank, thank you, Dr. Ibarra, and to your team, and, uh, for getting us to this point. You have, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Uh, Judge, Commissioners, thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our, the, our, our process and this project. Uh, I'm here with some of my students, some of my team members. Unfortunately, we couldn't all make it today. Today's a, a working day, and actually, we actually do come from the field from collecting some, from samples. But what I'm gonna, uh, I want to discuss to you is two things, and one of them already Commissioners Stout came out, which, which we want, uh, and, and, and Michael already stated, that we want an extension on us, on our project, and the reason is simple. This is a story of success, unprecedented success of collaboration between UTEP, the academia and UTEP, the Commissioners Office, and the community itself, in this case represented by all the neighborhoods in south-central El Paso. And I call this unprecedented, because this is the first time, that, at least to our knowledge, then which we are conducting what we call an environmental health risk assessment, not just, not just only based on the opinions of experts and academia. This is what we call a community-based participatory approach, in which we involve the community since the beginning, to listen to them, to listen to their concerns, and then we adjusted our strategy to find out a little bit deeper about, about their concerns, and how we go about solving these concerns. Uh, I just want to point out that these are, is our research team, that involves students, and involves Helix Solutions, and it involves other types of, uh, membership of the community, but we couldn't do this without the Commissioners' support, and we couldn't do, do this without the community of south-central, south-central El Paso. So, uh, what we wanted to do in this, uh, in, in this project, is to understand better what are the concerns of, uh, of the population of south-central El Paso. Everyone knows, everyone has heard about environmental health, or envi- or pollution, or issues that are surrounding our, uh, our communities, but, uh, most of the time, the common approach is for experts or academia to come into place, and then go about their, their business of conducting research, doing it, collecting data, and leave, never coming back to the, to the, to the population or the community. In this case, we wanted to, to do the, you know, uh, start it at, at the bottom. We wanted actually to hear the voices of the community and their concerns, and more specifically, their health concerns regarding the environment that surrounds, uh, not only their household, but also their neighboring communities. So what we want is to voice out, voice out those concerns, and then come up with solutions, or at least come up with recommendations and help us solve it. So what we wanted to do is to point out these hazards, and, and, uh, the final outcome will be for us to provide recommendations, uh, using the ecological model, that these, this means that we're going to provide recommendations that are going to apply to the individual, to the, to the neighborhood, to the community, and all the way up to government, uh, and try to develop, uh, uh, interventions that will help the outcomes of, especially of the, the health of population of this community. And this is particularly, uh, centered in south-central El Paso neighborhoods. This study, as I told you, is participatory in nature, and then we call this, uh, sequential design, that, what does that mean? Is basically that the community is going to tell us what to do, and what to do about what, specifically, what are their concerns, what are their, the hazards that they are, that are looking at, what are their, the, the hea- the health hazards that they associate with those environmental concerns, and for us to dig a little bit deeper into them, tell, tell them what it is, what we can do, and then explain it all out to them, and, and hopefully take it all, all the way up to the level of suggesting, uh, giving this information back to you, so you, the policy can be developed, or recommendations at the decision-making level for them, you know, to have a better understanding of the community. So I'm going to let, uh, Chris Villa from, uh, from, uh, Helix Solutions to tell you about, uh, the phases of this.
Hello, Christopher Villa, Principal Consultant at Helix Solutions. So as Dr. Ibarra had mentioned, the project is broken down into three phases, um, and so the first phase is, is, is complete, which entailed us having three community-focused group meetings, that each meeting was designed to, uh, to gather information from the community members. Uh, we had a total of about sixty people attend the three meetings, and the meetings were held in, um, in January and early February. Uh, so tho- those meetings and, and what they informed to us led us now to Phase Two, so the findings from there, so what they told us, what their concerns were, uh, we prioritized them, and that's informing us for the Phase Two. Phase Two is going to involve a, the data collection strategies through, uh, developing and implementing a community-wide survey. Uh, we plan to, to administer a survey to the community, which represents about ten thousand households or so, um, and then also collecting environmental sampling, uh, meaning we're going to collect air, soil, or water samples throughout the study area. And then, then the third bit would be then analyzing those data, providing reports, and then coming up with, with. Uh, as Dr. Ibarra also mentioned, um, it is a community case-based project, so, uh, meaning that we didn't just want to go in and start telling people, you know, this is what the concerns are, rather, we wanted to hear from the community first, and even planning our community-focused group meetings, we did pre-planning meetings, so we did have three meetings, uh, in October and early January, and then really asking community neighbors, uh, Neighborhood Association leaders, uh, to understand what their concerns are, but also to inform us what's the best approach to outreach to the community, um, and then, uh, and then from there, like, how do we, what type of research process would be used best, and so, and what they wanted to learn, and in other words, we shared everything with them, and we allowed them to have a, a seat at the, at the table, and then to be involved with all our decision-making. And then that, then that led into the Phase One, as I just mentioned, where we did the three meetings, and then we did compile a report, which I can pass out to you guys.
Yep.
So I designed that report, so if you see any typos, it's on my phone. Um, but you'll see in the report that we did, uh, come up with, uh, what the, the concerns were from the community, um, so sources or causes of environmental health risks, which included, they talked about things like air pollution, water pollution, ground contamination, and noise concerns. They also addressed, um, things like symptoms and their health effects, so, uh, issues are related to respiratory, neurological, or cognitive issues, uh, hearing and mental health concerns. And then they also brought up a lot of just broader community concerns, for example, lack of trust in government and, uh, industrial entities, and then they brought up issues related to environmental justice. Also within our, our meetings, our, our focus group meetings, uh, we had large maps, and you can see them in there, where we asked people to kind of identify areas of concern, and we were able to kind of group those, and kind of find, I, identify areas that were of particular concern. Uh, that map and those findings are also provided within the report. All right, so our next steps, as I mentioned, is, is developing the community survey. Uh, we did present the, the survey to the community last week, uh, and so we kind of got their approval on that. Uh, we went through the, the survey item by item, make sure that everything was clear, understandable, um, uh, again, it was all based on the, the findings from the earlier community meetings, and then, uh, our next steps are to then present the survey and our methods to UTEP IRB, uh, to get their approval on the research process. And then, and then, and then after that, then we'll, again, analyze the data, and then provide a comprehensive summary of the findings and recommendations. And so here's a timeline of, of what we expect, uh, to do throughout to the end, assuming that we got the extension. Uh, we will be running the survey, uh, from August through September, and then analyzing data in November, December, start drafting a report in January, February. Concurrently, and Dr. Ibarra can talk more about the environmental sampling, as from August through December, we'll be collecting the environmental samples, and then the January, February timeframe, analyzing those samples, and then from March and April, uh, drafting a larger, comprehensive report, and then in May, showing everything out.
So there was a, a concern on the community regarding, uh, the timing, it says, and basically their, their question says, "This is, it's going to take too long," right? We can't wait, well, until, you know, next year to hear you guys telling, telling us what's wrong with the environment. And, and we, we were fortunate to be able to explain that this is not going to be a static, uh, a static time. They're not going to be just waiting. As you can see in the blue line, that, that's underneath what it says, August, September, is the, in the survey data, we're going to start setting up what is called environmental monitoring. So this environmental monitoring is basically, uh, what we want to do is empower the community and take ownership of this project. And what are we going to do this? Well, uh, we're going to involve the community and all the monitoring that we do. Uh, for example, one of the things that we're going to do is to develop a, um, a, a grid of environmental sampling for air quality. And what we're going to do is put both, you know, low-cost and, uh, and, and, uh, let's say, uh, some more robust sensors out there for environmental quality, and then we're going to ma- uh, have the community access the information as it's being recorded. And these monitors, actually what they do is, uh, is, uh, monitor, well, several environmental and parameters, I mean, they're in the air, on real-time. And then what we are going to do is train the community, not only in how to access it, but also interpret this information, for them to be, uh, be able to make better decisions about their own health. And, and with this, what we're going to have, is going to have a, a monitoring system that's going to belong to them, right? And then they, from that, that, that time on, they can take a better, uh, uh, I'm going to say, uh, ownership of their own health. So they're going to be able to do all this. So yes, we are going to, at the end, collect all the data and, and, and try to establish associations with the data that we collect through the surveys, but in the meantime, no- nothing's going to be, uh, static. Uh, people are going to be able to look at this environmental data, uh, at, at the time that it's being monitored, which is going to be twenty-four-seven, and for, at least going to last for the next three years. If after the next three years, we see that there's community engagement, then we will seek the means, how to continue it. If not, then probably we need to, uh, consider other, other alternatives. Uh, the other thing that we're going to do is that we are also, uh, securing collaboration with other, uh, colleagues that will be able just to give us not, not only on the water, I mean, not only in the air, but also on water and soil sampling, uh, depending on the concerns, again, of, of the, the presence of the community. So this is nothing that is driven by us, it is driven by the community. Of course, we are going to be in charge of, uh, the scientific part of their concerns. And at the end, right, all this, uh, is going to be presented back to them, which is something that, to our knowledge, has been unprecedented, because the community never hears back from anyone that does research. So our main goal here is to bring back all this data, that, all the things that we collect, back to the community, and then back to you, so, you know, you are able to make, uh, better decisions, informed decisions based on scientific facts. And that is all that we have to say. If you have questions for us, I'll be glad to...
Commissioner Stout?
I don't know if anybody, anybody has questions or comments, but I, um, I appreciate the, uh, the presentation. Thank, thank you all, and do we have, do we need to, uh, take action to, to allow them to extend the, the time, the timeframe, Betsy? Okay, so I'll go ahead and make that, make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Stout. We have a motion from Commissioner Stout, a second from Judge Simoniego. The voting is open. Thank you, Commissioner. The motion carries.
Thank you, great job, and the timing is just incredible, and how fast you did this was unbelievable. Michael, thank you for coordinating that, and UTEP, as always, thank you.
Thank you very much, Doctor.
Thank you, Doctor. I mean, we couldn't do this without the, the support of the, of the county.
Thank you, Mr. Villa. Thank you to the team as well.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve, grant applications. Twelve A, grant application. Approve and authorize the county judge to approve and submit the Department of Justice Office on Violence Against Women Domestic Violence Supervision and Victim Advocacy Program in the amount of one million dollars. Further, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the accompanying certification, Human Immunodeficiency Virus Certification Minor Prosecution Certification of Eligibility, Certification of Non-Supplanting, Certification of Out-of-Scope Activities, Certification of Prosecution, and Confidentiality Acknowledgement Form. The project period is from October first, two thousand twenty-five, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight. No county match is required. Contract number two thousand twenty-five zero four seven four.
Welcome, Catherine.
Thank you. Good afternoon, County Judge Commissioners Catherine Jones, Criminal Justice Director with your Criminal Justice Coordination Department. Um, before I, I introduce Chris to give you specifics about the grant, I'd just like to say, I, I, I think this grant represents what is the best in the spirit of El Paso County. You've got three departments coming together, the CJC, the Sheriff's Office, and the District Attorney's Office, who are all coming together to do what's most important, and that's enhance public safety. I do want to thank Sheriff Ugarte and District Attorney Montoya for their willingness and their, um, vision in helping us with this. And now I'd like to introduce Chris Ray, to, to give you any specifics you might have.
Good afternoon, County Judge and Commissioners. Uh, thank you for this time. Uh, this grant is something that we're looking at, uh, addressing some of the victim, um, issues that we have out there, and currently, uh, when evaluating this grant, we're looking at, at seeing how can we best provide services to victims in the community, and one of them is, uh, we don't currently have the capability of notifying victims whenever defendants abscond from charges, whenever they've been arrested for charges that, uh, deal with sexual assault, family violence, or stalking. And so that's, uh, that's a critical need that the victims, uh, have out in the community, so partnering with the Sheriff's Office, especially since, uh, pre-trial supervision, um, cases have come steadily up, we need more help on that end, especially looking for individuals who have absconded, and we need to bring them back to the courts, back to the judges, to, uh, ensure that the criminal justice process is continuing. But more importantly, fifty grand of this is going to be going to, um, aid, uh, the Center Against Family Violence and Sexual Assaults, CASP. They're going to be providing, uh, warm handoffs, so if an individual is out in the community, uh, the sheriffs respond, they notify the victim service provider, and they go out and they attend, uh, with victims, these same exams, and they provide those services that they need, and helping victims get the services that they need at that time. In addition, it'll be providing overtime funds for the CJC to provide supervision of the specific cases, focusing on those cases being quickly to notify the courts whenever there's violations, uh, but also assisting those individuals who are on these type of, uh, uh, bonds. We want to make sure that they have the resources that they, that they need to be successful while they're on pre-trial supervision, providing them with support through our re-entry division, um, and as well as with the DA's office, providing them overtime, so then when we notify the courts that an individual has violated bond, they're also notifying the victims, the DA is, they already have that, uh, infrastructure in place, um, to be able to do that, so providing them overtime to address these issues, and these critical gaps is going to be very effective for us, as well as, uh, the community. Um, I'm here to provide any questions, I mean, any answers to questions that you might have, so thank you.
Betsy, any comments? Betsy, any comments?
Judge, no comments other than very proud of you and thank you for doing this.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve from Judge Simon Diego, a second from Commissioner Stoudt. The voting is open. Thank you, Commissioner. The motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Judge, it's 12:56. Would you like to recess for one hour?
Perfect timing.
Very good. Commissioners Court will recess for one hour. We will reconvene at 1:56 PM.
Do you like this little park right here at Escarate Park?
Yes.
Yes! All right. And I understand we're going to meet your mom, is that right? And she's kind of important in the county, isn't that correct? So she brings you out here a lot?
Not all the time.
Not all the time. Not nearly enough, Mom. We'll talk to her about that. Now, if you haven't been out to Escarate Park in a while, you, well, I know, show me around. If you haven't, there's an all-inclusive park right here for kids. That means that kids of every ability, every taste can come and have a fantastic time. I think the best part about this little park right here is, of course, all the equipment is brand new, and it has swings, it has things to climb on, it has anything that makes noise. We're going there next, and I think you know what I'm talking about. I'm not sure what that is right there, but it's a lot of fun, a lot of fun. I've seen that they've also changed Escarate Park a lot because they've added baseball fields. Do you guys play baseball?
Yes.
Who plays baseball?
I do.
Diego does? Lucas, you do too?
Yeah.
All right, I love that. It's my favorite sport in the world. My kids, when they were your age, used to play that too. Now, joining me now is the mom of those two adorable kids that you just saw, Desiree Gonzalez. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Wow, it's so beautiful out here.
It is.
Does this get packed during the weekends and stuff like that?
Yeah, you know what, especially right now, it's getting warmer and the night's beautiful park out here.
It is so. And the improvements are just beginning.
Yes.
I understand we're going to see some pickleball courts.
Yes.
Okay, where are your sons? Because I like to make noise. Okay, you want to grab one here? Come on, come on, Lucas, grab one! Don't be shy ever in life. Oh, you want mine? Okay, go ahead. Are we ready?
I want this too.
Well, you can't have them both! You can't have them both! You crazy kids today thinking that you get them all. Okay, don't go anywhere. You stay with KTSM 9 News.
Thank you for tuning into KTSM 9 News at 6 Small Town Spotlight. I'm Andy Morgan.
And I'm Monica Cortez. So we are coming to you live from the clubhouse here in Escarate Park. That is really close to that. Looking at the golf course this entire time, Andy, it looks really pretty. But I will tell you this, when we came out here to record some of the stories, some of the complaints, if you will, from some of the patrons here were, hey, I want to see renovations coming into this part of the area.
And of course, that was something that voters passed and approved in terms of some of those go-bonds that you saw on the ballot in November. Some upgrades are coming here to Escarate Park. We're going to cover some of that, but a lot to do here at Escarate Park, that's for sure. Whether you're on the lake, you're boating, you're fishing, whether you're here at the golf course, whether you're playing pickleball, I know you got to experience that for the first time, which is exciting, as well as the Family Aquatic Center is always a favorite.
Absolutely. So I got a chance to speak with county officials about the renovations and some of the amenities here at the park. Take a look at what they had to say.
The park was completed in 1940. 48-acre lake with a lakeside boardwalk, picnic areas, a golf course, and playgrounds. And nearly a century later, while some features and attractions have changed, the park's original design and intent hasn't.
Beginning in the mid-1850s, all of the United States' larger cities were designing what they called passive parks. It was places where you could go, you could walk, you could possibly ride a horse, you could play sports. The intent was multiple use, and obviously, that's what you see here now.
Back in 2021, El Paso County adopted a master plan for its parks, asking the community to share their views on what the parks needed, providing a blueprint for work to begin.
Looking at amenities that we will add in the future, new and improved picnic areas, the walking areas, planting more trees. I think we planted, just in the past two years, we planted about 150 trees.
Over the years, attractions have come and gone, racetracks and dragboats, raves and fishing tournaments, and of course, the childhood icon many El Pasuans still associate with the sprawling park, along with the age-old question, what would you do to go to Western Playland? The amusement park's former footprint has been upgraded, making way for more and different attractions.
We are going to be redoing the area right over here where Western Playland used to be. We're creating a festival area. We're going to be putting in underground electric so that we can bring in different shows and different programming.
As for the lake, the upkeep and maintenance is just the start. Previously, county officials mentioned they would have to drain the lake to clean it, but Commissioner David Stoudt says they may have found a better option.
There's a clay liner at the bottom of the lake, but we've found out through analysis that the liner is in good shape. It's intact. We're looking at possibly doing now is just dredging the lake and cleaning some of the gunk out of there. I don't think we're going to need to drain the lake.
In the end, what makes this park and the lake such an important piece of the Sun City's tapestry isn't necessarily the amenities, but rather the location.
You have the Franklin Mountains, you have the Juarez Mountains. You can look, and you just see what a great place we are. I mean, it's the coming together of two countries, three states, and it's right here. And that's pretty unique in the world, if you think about it.
Enjoy the nature, have some fun.
Leonardo is an outdoor enthusiast, and the hiking bike trail that's right at the entrance to Escarate Park is his new favorite spot.
We'll just bike along this trail, sometimes go along the park.
The Playa Drain Trail is a unique trail stretching almost seven picturesque miles from Escarate Park all the way to Campestrano Park in the lower valley.
It's part of this linear park program that the county and the city and the Paso de Norte Health Foundation have been working on.
Commissioner David Stoudt says the trail is only a small part of a much bigger project, a 75-mile countywide trail, to be exact.
The idea is to build a linear park or hiking bike trail that spans basically from the border with Doñana County in New Mexico to the border with Hudson County on the eastern side of El Paso County.
The Paso de Norte Trail, which broke ground in 2018, aimed at developing a countywide trail, is now promoting healthy living for community members.
When it's like not so sunny, we'll come here to like just go on the bikes.
While the project isn't complete, the trails that are open are methodically being connected, pieces of tranquil trails connecting neighborhoods throughout county, something Stoudt says is very important for the community.
You know, the more opportunities that people have, I think the healthier our community is going to be.
Leonardo agrees. The winding trails not only stitching the county together, but bringing his family closer as well.
Because it makes a stronger bond, rather than just being there at home.
Joining us now is Tim Fulton, the Director of Parks and Recreation. Tim, thanks so much for being here with us.
Thank you.
You know, and Tim, we kind of talked a little bit about it at the beginning of the show, and that was, you know, our viewers, our audience are very invested in Escarate. They were asking about the lake, when we're cleaning that, but most importantly, they were talking about golf courses here. Talk a little bit about the maintenance of it.
Sure. Well, it's a lot of maintenance. As everyone knows, I mean, it takes a lot of water to keep a golf course green, and that's our expectation. But recently, we hired a new golf course superintendent, Brad Weiss, and Brad's come in with tons of experience, I mean, lots and lots of years of experience. And one of the things Brad is doing, he's really trying to get our greens up to primo condition. We also are looking at our fairways. We've required some different maintenance. Our fairways had lots of weeds, so we want to address that. The other thing we're looking at, how do we manage our water? So some of the things we're doing is we're applying product to our fairways, our greens, which will help the soil absorb that water and hold it in better so that we hopefully are going to reduce the amount of water we're using on our courses and cut our costs down more, and at the same time, improve that maintenance.
Certainly a lot to manage a golf course in the middle of the desert. Also a lot to manage. You guys have had a great response, it seems like, from your youth leagues and kids playing sports here at Escarate Park, but in turn, also a lot of wear and tear on some of those youth league fields.
Yeah, you know, it's great to see because over and over, we hear how much time our kids spend in front of our screens. But let me tell you, the kiddos out at our sports park, they're out there interacting with each other, they're learning baseball. And I mean, that's from ages four and under, all the way up to our 12, almost 13-year-olds. And the growth is tremendous. Last year for our summer league, which is usually our shorter league, we were at 150. I think we're going to hit 250 teams. That's not players, teams. So we're busting at the seams at the sports park. We're trying to accommodate this growth, and it's a big challenge. The other thing we're doing, we got kudos about how well we maintain our sports park, but they want to see our fields here in Escarate at that same level. So Ben Vias, who's our maintenance manager, his team and him are working to improve our diamond fields. And I think if you take a drive around, you see they're looking better and better this season. Also, our focus this year is going to be on our flat fields. We've got soccer programs. We've got an incredibly large youth tackle and touch football program that a private organization runs here in the park. And any given Saturday morning, the park is And any given Saturday morning, the park is just hopping with lots of activity.
Do you like this little park right here at Ascarate Park? Yes! All right. And I understand we're going to meet your mom, is that right? And she's kind of important in the county, isn't that correct? So she brings you out here a lot?
Not all the time.
Not all the time. Not nearly enough, Mom. We'll talk to her about that. Now, if you haven't been out to Ascarate Park in a while, you, you, well, I know, show me around. If you haven't, there's a, there's an all-inclusive park right here for kids. That means that kids of every ability, every taste can come and have a fantastic time. I think the best part about this little park right here is, of course, all the equipment is brand new, and it has swings, it has things to climb on, it has anything that makes noise. We're going there next, and I think you know what I'm talking about. I'm not sure what that is right there, but it's a lot of fun, a lot of fun. I've seen that they've also changed Ascarate Park a lot because they've added baseball fields. Do you guys play baseball?
Yes.
Who plays baseball?
I do.
Diego does? Lucas, you do too?
Yeah.
All right, I love this. It's my, it's my favorite sport in the world. My kids, when they were your age, used to play that too. Now, joining me now is the mom of those two adorable kids that you just saw, Desiree Gonzalez. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Wow, it's so beautiful out here.
It is.
Does this get packed during the weekends and stuff like that?
Yeah, you know, especially right now, it's getting warmer and the night's beautiful, park out here.
It is so, and, and the improvements are just beginning.
Yes.
I understand we're going to see some pickleball courts.
Yes.
Okay, where are your sons? Because I like to make noise. Okay, you want to grab one here? Come on, come on, Lucas, grab one! Don't be shy ever in life. Oh, you want mine. Okay, go ahead. Are we ready? Well, you can't have them both! You can't have them both! You crazy kids today thinking that you get them all. Okay, don't go anywhere. You stay with KTSM 9 News.
Thank you for tuning into KTSM 9 News at 6 Small Town Spotlight. I'm Andy Morgan.
And I'm Monica Cortez. So we are coming to you live from the clubhouse here in Ascarate Park. That is really close to that. Looking at the golf course this entire time, Andy, it looks really pretty. But I will tell you this, when we came out here to record some of the stories, some of the complaints, if you will, from some of the patrons here were, hey, I want to see renovations coming into this part of the area.
And of course, that was something that voters passed and approved in terms of some of those go bonds that you saw on the ballot in November. Some upgrades are coming here to Ascarate Park. We're going to cover some of that, but a lot to do here at Ascarate Park, that's for sure. Whether you're on the lake, you're boating, you're fishing, whether you're here at the golf course, whether you're playing pickleball, I know you got to experience that for the first time, which is exciting, as well as the Family Aquatic Center is always a favorite.
Absolutely. So I got a chance to speak with county officials about the renovations and some of the amenities here at the park. Take a look at what they had to say.
The park was completed in 1940. It's a 48 acre lake with a lakeside boardwalk, picnic areas, a golf course and playgrounds. And nearly a century later, while some features and attractions have changed, the park's original design and intent hasn't.
Beginning in the mid 1850s, all of the United States' larger cities were designing what they called passive parks. It was places where you could go, you could walk, you could possibly ride a horse, you could play sports. The intent was multiple use, and obviously, that's what you see here now.
Back in 2021, El Paso County adopted a master plan for its parks, asking the community to share their views on what the parks needed, providing a blueprint for work to begin.
Looking at amenities that we will add in the future, new and improved picnic areas, the walking areas, planting more trees. I think we planted, just in the past two years, we planted about 150 trees.
Over the years, attractions have come and gone, racetracks and dragboats, raves and fishing tournaments. And of course, the childhood icon many El Pasoans still associate with the sprawling park. Along with the age-old question, what would you do to go to Western Playland? The amusement park's former footprint has been upgraded, making way for more and different attractions.
We are going to be redoing the area right over here where Western Playland used to be. We're creating a festival area. We're going to be putting in underground electric so that we can bring in different shows and different programming.
As for the lake, the upkeep and maintenance is just the start. Previously, county officials mentioned they would have to drain the lake to clean it. But Commissioner David Stout says they may have found a better option.
There's a clay liner at the bottom of the lake, but we've found out through analysis that the liner is in good shape. It's intact. We're looking at possibly doing now is just dredging the lake and cleaning some of the gunk out of there. I don't think we're going to need to drain the lake.
In the end, what makes this park and the lake such an important piece of the Sun City's tapestry isn't necessarily the amenities, but rather the location.
You have the Franklin Mountains, you have the Juarez Mountains. You can look and you just see what a great place we are. I mean, it's the coming together of two countries, three states, and it's right here. And that's pretty unique in the world, if you think about it.
Enjoy the nature, have some fun.
Leonardo is an outdoor enthusiast, and the hiking bike trail that's right at the entrance to Ascarate Park is his new favorite spot.
We'll just bike along this trail, sometimes go along the park.
The Playa Drain Trail is a unique trail stretching almost seven picturesque miles from Ascarate Park all the way to Campestrano Park in the lower valley.
It's part of this linear park program that the county and the city and the Paso Norte Health Foundation have been working on.
Commissioner David Stout says the trail is only a small part of a much bigger project, a 75-mile countywide trail, to be exact.
The idea is to, is to build a linear park or hike and bike trail that spans basically from the border with Doñana County in New Mexico to the border with Hudson County on the eastern side of El Paso County.
The Paso de Norte Trail, which broke ground in 2018, aimed at developing a countywide trail, is now promoting healthy living for community members.
When it's like not so sunny, we'll come here to like just go on the bikes.
While the project isn't complete, the trails that are open are methodically being connected. Pieces of tranquil trails connecting neighborhoods throughout county, something Stout says is very important for the community.
You know, the more opportunities that people have, I think the healthier our community is going to be.
Leonardo agrees. The winding trails not only stitching the county together, but bringing his family closer as well.
Because it makes a stronger bond, rather than just being there at home.
Joining us now is Tim Fulton, the Director of Parks and Recreation. Tim, thanks so much for being here with us.
Thank you.
You know, and Tim, we kind of talked a little bit about it at the beginning of the show, and that was, you know, our viewers, our audience are very invested in Ascarate. They were asking about the lake, when we're cleaning that, but most importantly, they were talking about golf courses here. Talk a little bit about the maintenance of it.
Sure. Well, it's a lot of maintenance. As everyone knows, I mean, it takes a lot of water to keep a golf course green, and that's our expectation. But recently, we hired a new golf course superintendent, Brad Weiss, and Brad's come in with tons of experience. I mean, lots and lots of years of experience. And one of the things Brad is doing, he's really trying to get our greens up to primo condition. We also are looking at our fairways. We've required some different maintenance. Our fairways had lots of weeds, so we want to address that. The other thing we're looking at, how do we manage our water? So some of the things So some of the things we're doing is we're applying product to our fairways, our greens, which will help the soil absorb that water and hold it in better so that we hopefully are going to reduce the amount of water we're using on our courses and cut our costs down more, and at the same time, improve that maintenance.
Certainly a lot to manage a golf course in the middle of the desert. Also a lot to manage. You guys have had a great response, it seems like, from your youth leagues and playing, kids playing sports here at Ascarate Park. But in turn, also a lot of wear and tear on some of those youth league fields.
Yeah, you know, it's great to see because over and over we hear how much time our kids spend in front of our screens. But let me tell you, the kiddos out at our sports park, they're out there interacting with each other. They're learning baseball. And I mean, that's from ages four and under, all the way up to our 12, almost 13-year-olds. And the growth is tremendous. Last year for our summer league, which is usually our shorter league, we were at 150. I think we're going to hit 250 teams. That's not players, teams. So we're busting at the seams at the sports park. We're trying to accommodate this growth, and it's a big challenge. The other thing we're doing, we got kudos about how well we maintain our sports park, but they want to see our fields here in Ascarate at that same level. So Ben Vias, who's our maintenance manager, his team and him are working to improve our diamond fields. And I think if you take a drive around, you see they're looking better and better this season. Also, our focus this year is going to be on our flat fields. We've got soccer programs. We've got an incredibly large youth tackle and touch football program that a private organization runs here in the park. And any given Saturday morning, the park is just hopping with lots of activity.
Do you like this little park right here at Ascarate Park?
Yes.
Yes, all right. And I understand we're going to meet your mom, is that right? And she's kind of important in the county, isn't that correct? So she brings you out here a lot?
Not all the time.
Not all the time. Not nearly enough, Mom. We'll talk to her about that. Now, if you haven't been out to Ascarate Park in a while, you, you, well, I know, show me around. If you haven't, there's a, there's an all-inclusive park right here for kids. That means that kids of every ability, every taste can come and have a fantastic time. I think the best part about this little park right here is, of course, all the equipment is brand new. And it has swings, it has things to climb on, it has anything that makes noise. We're going there next, and I think you know what I'm talking about. I'm not sure what that is right there. But it's a lot of fun, a lot of fun. I've seen that they've also changed Ascarate Park a lot because they've added baseball fields. Do you guys play baseball?
Yes.
Who plays baseball?
I do.
Diego does? Lucas, you do too?
Yeah.
All right, I love this. It's my, it's my favorite sport in the world. My kids, when they were your age, used to play that too. Now, joining me now is the mom of those two adorable kids that you just saw, Desiree Gonzalez. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Wow, it's so beautiful out here.
It is.
Does this get packed during the weekends and stuff like that?
Yeah, you know, especially right now, it's getting warmer and the night's beautiful park out here.
It is so, and, and the improvements are just beginning.
Yes.
I understand we're going to see some pickleball courts.
Yes.
Okay, where are your sons? Because I like to make noise. Okay, you want to grab one here? Come on, come on, Lucas, grab one. Don't be shy ever in life. Oh, you want mine? Okay, go ahead. Are we ready?
I want this too.
Well, you can't have them both. You can't have them both. You crazy kids today thinking that you get them all. Okay, don't go anywhere. You stay with KTSN Nine News.
Thank you for tuning into KTSN Nine News at Six Small Town Spotlight. I'm Andy Morgan.
And I'm Monica Cortez. So we are coming to you live from the clubhouse here in Ascarate Park. That is really close to that. Looking at the golf course this entire time, Andy, it looks really pretty. But I will tell you this, when we came out here to record some of the stories, some of the complaints, if you will, from some of the patrons here were, hey, I want to see renovations coming into this part of the area.
And of course, that was something that voters passed and approved in terms of some of those go bonds that you saw on the ballot in November. Some upgrades are coming here to Ascarate Park. We're going to cover some of that, but a lot to do here at Ascarate Park, that's for sure. Whether you're on the lake, you're boating, you're fishing, whether you're here at the golf course, whether you're playing pickleball, I know you got to experience that for the first time, which is exciting, as well as the Family Aquatic Center is always a favorite.
Absolutely. So I got a chance to speak with county officials about the renovations and some of the amenities here at the park. Take a look at what they had to say. The park was completed in 1940. It's a 48 acre lake with a lakeside boardwalk, picnic areas, a golf course and playgrounds. And nearly a century later, while some features and attractions have changed, the park's original design and intent hasn't.
Beginning in the mid 1850s, all of the United States' larger cities were designing what they called passive parks. It was places where you could go, you could walk, you could possibly ride a horse, you could play sports. The intent was multiple use, and obviously that's what you see here now.
Back in 2021, El Paso County adopted a master plan for its parks, asking the community to share their views on what the parks needed, providing a blueprint for work to begin.
Looking at amenities that we will add in the future, new and improved picnic areas, the walking areas, planting more trees. I think we've planted, just in the past two years, we've planted about 150 trees.
Over the years, attractions have come and gone. Race tracks and drag boats, raves and fishing tournaments. And of course, the childhood icon many El Pasoans still associate with the sprawling park. Along with the age-old question, what would you do to go to Western Playland? The amusement park's former footprint has been upgraded, making way for more and different attractions.
We are going to be redoing the area right over here where Western Playland used to be. We're creating a festival area. We're going to be putting in underground electric so that we can bring in different shows and different programming.
As for the lake, the upkeep and maintenance is just the start. Previously, county officials mentioned they would have to drain the lake to clean it. But Commissioner David Stout says they may have found a better option.
There's a clay liner at the bottom of the lake. But we've found out through analysis that the liner is in good shape. It's intact. We're looking at possibly doing now is just dredging the lake and cleaning some of the gunk out of there. I don't think we're going to need to drain the lake.
In the end, what makes this park and the lake such an important piece of the Sun City's tapestry isn't necessarily the amenities, but rather the location.
You have the Franklin Mountains, you have the Juarez Mountains. You can look and you just see what a great place we are. I mean, it's the coming together of two countries, three states, and it's right here. And that's pretty unique in the world, if you think about it.
Enjoy the nature, have some fun.
Leonardo is an outdoor enthusiast, and the hiking bike trail that's right at the entrance to Ascarate Park is his new favorite spot.
We'll just bike along this trail, sometimes go along the park.
The Playa Drain Trail is a unique trail stretching almost seven picturesque miles from Ascarate Park all the way to Campestrano Park in the lower valley.
It's part of this linear park program that the county and the city and the Paso Norte Health Foundation have been working on.
Commissioner David Stout says the trail is only a small part of a much bigger project, a 75 mile countywide trail, to be exact.
The idea is to, is to build a linear park or hiking bike trail that spans basically from the border with Doñana County in New Mexico to the border with Hudson County on the eastern side of El Paso County. to the border with Huddsith County on the eastern side of El Paso County.
The Paso de Norte Trail, which broke ground in 2018, aimed at developing a county-wide trail, is now promoting healthy living for community members.
When it's like not so sunny, we'll come here to like just go on the bikes.
While the project isn't complete, the trails that are open are methodically being connected. Pieces of tranquil trails connecting neighborhoods throughout county, something Stout says is very important for the community.
You know, the more opportunities that people have, I think the healthier our community is gonna be.
Leonardo agrees. The winding trails not only stitching the county together, but bringing his family closer as well.
Because it makes a stronger bond, rather than just being there at home.
Joining us now is Tim Fulton, the Director of Parks and Recreation. Tim, thanks so much for being here with us.
Thank you.
You know, and Tim, we kinda talked a little bit about it at the beginning of the show, and that was, you know, our viewers, our audience are very invested in Ascari. They were asking about the, the lake, when we're cleaning that. But most importantly, they were talking about golf courses here. Talk a little bit about the maintenance of it.
Sure. Well, it's a lot of maintenance. As everyone knows, I mean, it takes a lot of water to keep a golf course green, and that's our expectation. Uh, but recently, we hired a new golf course superintendent, Brad Weiss. And Brad's come in with tons of experience, I mean, lots and lots of years of experience. And one of the things Brad is doing, he's really trying to get our greens up to primo condition. Uh, we also are looking at our fairways. We, we required some different maintenance. Our fairways had lots of weeds, so we wanna address that. Uh, the other thing we're looking at, how do we manage our water? So some of the things we're doing is we're applying product to our fairways, our greens, which will help the soil absorb that water and hold it in better so that we hopefully are gonna reduce the amount of water we're using on our courses and, and cut our costs down more, and at the same time, improve that maintenance.
Certainly a lot to manage a golf course in the middle of the desert. Also a lot to manage. You guys have had a great response, it seems like, from your youth leagues and, and playing, uh, kids playing sports here at Ascari Park. But in turn, also a lot of wear and tear on some of those youth league fields.
Yeah, you know, it's great to see because, uh, over and over, we hear how much time our kids spend in front of our screens. But let me tell you, the kiddos out at our sports park, they're out there interacting with each other. They're learning baseball. And I mean, that's from ages four and under, all the way up to our 12, almost 13-year-olds. And the growth is tremendous. Last year, for our summer league, which is usually our, our shorter league, um, we were at 150. I think we're gonna hit 250 teams. That's not players, teams. So we're busting at the seams at the sports park. We're trying to accommodate this growth, um, and it's a big challenge. The other thing we're doing, uh, we got kudos about how well we maintain our sports park, but they wanna see our fields here in Ascari at that same level. So Ben Vias, who's our maintenance manager, his team and him are working to improve our diamond fields. And I think if you take a drive around, you see they're looking better and better this season. Also, our focus this year is gonna be on our flat fields. We've got soccer programs. We've got an incredibly large, uh, youth tackle and touch football program that a private organization runs here in the park. And any given Saturday morning, the park is just hopping with lots of activity.
Do you like this little park right here at Escarate Park? Yes, alright, and I understand we're gonna meet your mom, is that right? And she's kind of important in the county, isn't that correct? So she brings you out here a lot?
Not all the time.
Not all the time, not nearly enough, Mom, well we'll talk to her about that. Now, if you haven't been out to Escarate Park in a while, you, you, well, I know, show me around. If you haven't, there's a, there's an all-inclusive park right here for kids. That means that kids of every ability, every taste can come and have a fantastic time. I think the best part about this little park right here is, of course, all the equipment is brand-new. And it has swings, it has things to climb on, it has anything-
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. It is 2:08 PM. Commissioners Court has reconvened into a regular open session. Commissioner Stout, we need to take a motion to reconsider item 4F from the consent agenda. We have a correction that needs to be read into the record.
Okay, so moved.
Thank you, Commissioner. May I have a second?
Commissioner Holguin seconds.
Thank you, Commissioner Holguin.
I vote, I, mine's still not working.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stout is coming up, okay. Thank you so much, motion carries. Item 4F, we have a correction to read in for this item. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the amended engagement letter for legal services between El Paso County and the Chapman Firm in an amount not to exceed $20,000. Funds are available in various general obligation bond accounts. Contract number 2025-0468. We can have a motion. Or F?
F?
F as in Fox.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am. We have a motion.
So, I move to approve.
As corrected, yes sir. Thank you, Commissioner, may we have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Holguin, the voting is open.
I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Thank you, Commissioners, the motion carries. Before we go into executive session, we have had a request to delete item 13B.
Can we actually postpone that, please, for one week?
The item is pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, discuss pending matters related to Marathon Petroleum's El Paso Refinery Air Permit Request for Permit Number 18897. County Attorney's Case Number 000424-AA. We have a motion to postpone for one week. Motion from Commissioner Stout is second from Commissioner Butler, the voting is open.
I vote aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Coronado, the motion carries. At this time, Commissioners Court will recess into executive session to discuss items 13A, 13C, and 13D pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 and Section 551.074. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action.
Do you like this little park right here at Escarate Park?
Yes.
Yes, alright, and I understand we're gonna meet your mom, is that right? And she's kind of important in the county, isn't that correct? So she brings you out here a lot?
Not all the time.
Not all the time, not nearly enough, Mom, well we'll talk to her about that. Now, if you haven't been out to Escarate Park in a while, you, you, well, I know, show me around. If you haven't, there's a, there's an all-inclusive park right here for kids. That means that kids of every ability, every taste can come and have a fantastic time. I think the best part about this little park right here is, of course, all the equipment is brand-new. And it has swings, it has things to climb on, it has anything that makes noise. We're going there next, and I think you know what I'm talking about. I'm not sure what that is right there. But it's a lot of fun, a lot of fun. I've seen that they've also changed Escarate Park a lot, because they've added baseball fields. Do you guys play baseball? Who plays baseball?
I do.
Diego does? Lucas, you do too?
Yeah.
Alright, I love this, my- It's my favorite sport in the world. My kids, when they were your age, used to play that too. Now, joining me now is the mom of those two adorable kids that you just saw, Desiree Gonzalez, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Wow, it's so beautiful out here.
It is.
Does this get packed during the weekends and stuff like that?
Yeah, you know what, especially right now, it's getting warmer and the night's beautiful, park out here.
It is so, and, and, the improvements are just beginning.
Yes.
I understand we're gonna see some pickleball courts.
Yes.
Okay, where are your sons, because I like to make noise. Okay, you wanna grab one here? Come on, come on, Lucas, grab one! Don't be shy ever in la- oh, you want mine, okay, go ahead. Are we ready?
I want this too.
Well, you can't have them both! You can't have them both! You crazy kids today thinking that you get them all! Okay, don't go anywhere, you stay with KTSM 9 News.
Thank you for tuning in to KTSM 9 News at 6 Small Town Spotlight, I'm Andy Morgan.
And I'm Monica Cortez. So, we are coming to you live from the clubhouse here in Escarate Park. That is really close to that- Looking at the golf course this entire time, Andy, it looks really pretty. But I will tell you this, when we came out here to record some of the stories, some of the complaints, if you will, from some of the patrons here were, "Hey, I wanna see renovations coming into this part of the area."
And of course, that was something that voters passed and approved in terms of some of those go-bonds that you saw on the ballot in November. Some upgrades are coming here to Escarate Park, we're gonna cover some of that. But, a lot to do here at Escarate Park, that's for sure. Whether you're on the lake, you're boating, you're fishing, whether you're here at the golf course, whether you're playing pickleball, I know you got to experience that for the first time, which is exciting, as well as the Family Aquatic Center is always a favorite.
Absolutely, so I got a chance to speak with county officials about the renovations and some of the amenities here at the park. Take a look at what they had to say. The park was completed in 1940. It's a 48-acre lake with a lakeside boardwalk, picnic areas, a golf course, and playgrounds. And nearly a century later, while some features and attractions have changed, the park's original design and intent hasn't.
Beginning in the mid-1850s, all of the United States' larger cities were designing what they called passive parks. It was places where you could go, you could walk, you could possibly ride a horse, you could play sports. The intent was multiple use, and obviously, that's what you see here now.
Back in 2021, El Paso County adopted a master plan for its parks, asking the community to share their views on what the parks needed, providing a blueprint for work to begin.
Looking at amenities that we will add in the future, new and improved picnic areas, the walking areas, planting more trees. I think we've planted, just in the past two years, we've planted about 150 trees.
Over the years, attractions have come and gone. Race tracks and dragboats, raves and fishing tournaments, and of course, the childhood icon many El Pasoans still associate with the sprawling park. Along with the age-old question, "What would you do to go to Western Playland?" The amusement park's former footprint has been upgraded, making way for more and different attractions.
We are going to be redoing the area right over here where Western Playland used to be. We're creating a festival area, we're gonna be putting in underground electric so that we can bring in different shows and different programming.
As for the lake, the upkeep and maintenance is just the start. Previously, county officials mentioned they would have to drain the lake to clean it. But Commissioner David Stout says they may have found a better option.
There's a clay liner at the bottom of the lake. But, we've found out through analysis that the liner is in good shape, it's intact. What we're looking at possibly doing now is just dredging the lake and cleaning some of the gunk out of there. I don't think we're gonna need to drain the lake.
In the end, what makes this park and the lake such an important piece of the Sun City's tapestry, isn't necessarily the amenities, but rather, the location.
You have the Franklin Mountains, you have the Juarez Mountains, you can look and you just see what a great place we are. I mean, it's the coming together of two countries, three states, and it's right here. And that's pretty unique in the world, if you think about it.
Enjoy the nature, have some fun.
Leonardo is an outdoor enthusiast, and the hiking bike trail that's right at the entrance to Escarate Park is his new favorite spot.
We'll just bike along this trail, sometimes go along the park.
The Playa Drain Trail is a unique trail stretching almost seven picturesque miles from Escarate Park all the way to Campestrano Park in the Lower Valley.
It's part of this linear park program that the county and the city and the Paso de Norte Health Foundation have been working on.
Commissioner David Stout says the trail is only a small part of a much bigger project, a 75-mile county-wide trail, to be exact.
The idea is to, is to build a linear park or hiking bike trail that spans basically from the border with Doñana County in New Mexico to the border with Hudson County on the eastern side of El Paso County.
The Paso de Norte Trail, which broke ground in 2018, aimed at developing a county-wide trail, is now promoting healthy living for community members.
When it's like, not so sunny, we'll come here to like, just go on the bikes.
While the project isn't complete, the trails that are open are methodically being connected. Pieces of tranquil trails connecting neighborhoods throughout county, something Stout says is very important for the community.
You know, the more opportunities that people have, I think the healthier our community is gonna be.
Leonardo agrees. The winding trails not only stitching the county together, but bringing his family closer as well.
Because it makes a stronger bond, rather than just being there at home.
Joining us now is Tim Fulton, the Director of Parks and Recreation. Tim, thanks so much for being here with us.
Thank you.
You know, and Tim, we kinda talked a little bit about it at the beginning of the show, and that was, you know, our viewers, our audience are very invested in Escarate. They were asking about the lake, when we're cleaning that, but most importantly, they were talking about golf courses here. Talk a little bit about the maintenance of it.
Sure, well, it's a lot of maintenance. As everyone knows, I mean, it takes a lot of water to keep a golf course green, and that's our expectation. But recently, we hired a new golf course superintendent, Brad Weiss. And Brad's come in with tons of experience, I mean, lots and lots of years of experience. And one of the things Brad is doing, he's really trying to get our greens up to primo condition. We also are looking at our fairways. We've required some different maintenance. Our fairways had lots of weeds, so we wanna address that. The other thing we're looking at, how do we manage our water? So some of the things we're doing is we're applying product to our fairways, our greens, which will help the soil absorb that water and hold it in better so that we hopefully are gonna reduce the amount of water we're using on our courses and cut our costs down more. And at the same time, improve that maintenance.
Certainly a lot to manage a golf course in the middle of the desert. Also a lot to manage, you guys have had a great response, it seems like, from your youth leagues and playing, kids playing sports here at Escarate Park, but in turn, also a lot of wear and tear on some of those youth league fields.
Yeah, you know, it's great to see, because over and over, we hear how much time our kids spend in front of our screens. But let me tell you, the kiddos out at our sports park, they're out there interacting with each other, they're learning baseball. And I mean, that's from ages four and under, all the way up to our 12, almost 13-year-olds. And the growth is tremendous. Last year, for our summer league, which is usually our shorter league, we were at 150, I think we're gonna hit 250 teams, that's not players, teams. So, we're busting at the seams at the sports park, we're trying to accommodate this growth, and it's a big challenge. The other thing we're doing, we got kudos about how well we maintain our sports park, but they wanna see our fields here in Escarate at that same level. So, Ben Vias, who's our maintenance manager, his team and him are working to improve our diamond fields, and I think if you take a drive around, you see they're looking better and better this season. Also, our focus this year is gonna be on our flat fields, we've got soccer programs, we've got an incredibly large youth tackle and touch football program that a private organization runs here in the park. And any given Saturday morning, the park is just hopping with lots of activity.
Do you like this little park right here at Escarate Park?
Yes.
Yes. All right. And I understand we're going to meet your mom, is that right? And she's kind of important in the county, isn't that correct? So she brings you out here a lot?
Not all the time.
Not all the time. Not nearly enough, Mom. We'll talk to her about that. Now, if you haven't been out to Escarate Park in a while, you, you, well, I know, show me around. If, if you haven't, there's a, there's an all-inclusive park right here for kids. That means that kids of every ability, every taste can come and have a fantastic time. I think the best part about this little park right here is, of course, all the equipment is brand new and it has swings, it has things to climb on, it has anything that makes noise. We're going there next and I think you know what I'm talking about. I'm not sure what that is right there, but it's a lot of fun, a lot of fun. I've seen that they've also changed Escarate Park a lot because they've added baseball fields. Do you guys play baseball?
Yes.
Who plays baseball?
I do.
Diego does? Lucas, you do too?
Yeah.
All right. I love it. It's my, it's my favorite sport in the world. My kids, when they were your age, used to play that too. Now, joining me now is the mom of those two adorable kids that you just saw, Desiree Gonzalez. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Wow, it's so beautiful out here.
It is.
Does this get packed during the weekends and stuff like that?
Yeah. You know what? Especially right now, it's getting warmer and the night's beautiful park out here.
It is so, and, and the improvements are just beginning.
Yes.
I understand we're going to see some pickleball courts.
Yes.
Okay, where are your sons? Because I like to make noise. Okay, you want to grab one here? Come on, come on, Lucas, grab one. Don't be shy ever in, oh, you want mine. Okay, go ahead. Are we ready?
I want this too.
Well, you can't have them both. You can't have them both. You crazy kids today thinking that you get them all. Okay, don't go anywhere. You stay with KTSM 9 News.
Thank you for tuning into KTSM 9 News at 6 Small Town Spotlight. I'm Andy Morgan.
And I'm Monica Cortez. So we are coming to you live from the clubhouse here in Escarate Park. That is really close to that. Looking at the golf course this entire time, Andy, it looks really pretty, but I will tell you this, when we came out here to record some of the stories, some of the complaints, if you will, from some of the patrons here were, hey, I want to see renovations coming into this part of the area.
And of course, that was something that voters passed and approved in terms of some of those go-bonds that you saw on the ballot in November. Some upgrades are coming here to Escarate Park. We're going to cover some of that, but a lot to do here at Escarate Park, that's for sure. Whether you're on the lake, you're boating, you're fishing, whether you're here at the golf course, whether you're playing pickleball, I know you got to experience that for the first time, which is exciting, as well as the Family Aquatic Center is always a favorite.
Absolutely. So I got a chance to speak with county officials about the renovations and some of the amenities here at the park. Take a look at what they had to say.
The park was completed in 1940. It's a 48-acre lake with a lakeside boardwalk, picnic areas, a golf course, and playgrounds. And nearly a century later, while some features and attractions have changed, the park's original design and intent hasn't.
Beginning in the mid-1850s, all of the United States' larger cities were designing what they called passive parks. It was places where you could go, you could walk, you could possibly ride a horse, you could play sports. The intent was multiple use and obviously that's what you see here now.
Back in 2021, El Paso County adopted a master plan for its parks, asking the community to share their views on what the parks needed, providing a blueprint for work to begin.
Looking at amenities that we will add in the future, new and improved picnic areas, the walking areas, planting more trees. I think we planted, just in the past two years, we planted about 150 trees.
Over the years, attractions have come and gone, racetracks and drag boats, raves and fishing tournaments, and of course, the childhood icon many El Pasoans still associate with the sprawling park, along with the age-old question, what would you do to go to Western Playland? The amusement park's former footprint has been upgraded, making way for more and different attractions.
We are going to be redoing the area right over here where Western Playland used to be. We're creating a festival area. We're going to be putting in underground electric so that we can bring in different shows and, and different programming.
As for the lake, the upkeep and maintenance is just the start. Previously, county officials mentioned they would have to drain the lake to clean it, but Commissioner David Stout says they may have found a better option.
There's a clay liner at the bottom of, of the lake, but we've found out through analysis that the liner is in good shape. It's intact. We're looking at possibly doing now is, is just dredging the lake and cleaning some of the gunk out of there. I don't think we're going to need to drain the lake.
In the end, what makes this park and the lake such an important piece of the Sun City's tapestry isn't necessarily the amenities, but rather the location.
You have the Franklin Mountains, you have the Juarez Mountains. You can look and you just see what a great place we are. I mean, it's the coming together of two countries, three states, and it's right here. And that's pretty unique in the world, if you think about it.
Enjoy the nature, have some fun.
Leonardo is an outdoor enthusiast and the hiking bike trail that's right at the entrance to Escarate Park is his new favorite spot.
We'll just bike along this trail, sometimes go along the park.
The Playa Drain Trail is a unique trail stretching almost seven picturesque miles from Escarate Park all the way to Campestrano Park in the lower valley.
It's part of this linear park program that the county and the city and the Paso Norte Health Foundation have been working on.
Commissioner David Stout says the trail is only a small part of a much bigger project, a 75-mile countywide trail, to be exact.
The idea is to, is to build a, a linear park or hiking bike trail that spans basically from the border with Doñana County in New Mexico to the border with Huddsith County on the eastern side of El Paso County.
The Paso de Norte Trail, which broke ground in 2018, aimed at developing a countywide trail, is now promoting healthy living for community members.
When it's like not so sunny, we'll come here to like just go on the bikes.
While the project isn't complete, the trails that are open are methodically being connected, pieces of tranquil trails connecting neighborhoods throughout county, something Stout says is very important for the community.
You know, the more opportunities that people have, I think the healthier our community is going to be.
Leonardo agrees. The winding trails not only stitching the county together, but bringing his family closer as well.
Because it makes a stronger bond rather than just being there at home.
Joining us now is Tim Fulton, the Director of Parks and Recreation. Tim, thanks so much for being here with us.
Thank you.
You know, and Tim, we kind of talked a little bit about it at the beginning of the show and that was, you know, our viewers, our audience are very invested in Escarate. They were asking about the, the lake, when we're cleaning that, but most importantly, they were talking about golf courses here. Talk a little bit about the maintenance of it.
Sure. Well, it's a lot of maintenance. As everyone knows, I mean, it takes a lot of water to keep a golf course green and that's our expectation. But recently, we hired a new golf course superintendent, Brad Weiss, and Brad's come in with tons of experience. I mean, lots and lots of years of experience. And one of the things Brad is doing, he's really trying to get our greens up to primo condition. We also are looking at our fairways. We, we required some different maintenance. Our fairways had lots of weeds, so we want to address that. The other thing we're looking at, how do we manage our water? So some of the things we're doing is we're applying product to our fairways, our greens, which will help the soil absorb that water and hold it in better so that we hopefully are going to reduce the amount of water we're using on our courses and, and cut our costs down more and at the same time improve that maintenance.
Certainly a lot to manage a golf course in the middle of the desert. Also a lot to manage. You guys have had a great response, it seems like, from your youth leagues and, and playing, kids playing sports here at Escarate Park, but in turn, also a lot of wear and tear on some of those youth league fields.
Yeah, you know, it's great to see because over and over we hear how much time our kids spend in front of our screens, but let me tell you, the kiddos out at our sports park, they're out there interacting with each other. They're learning baseball. And I mean, that's from ages four and under all the way up to our 12, almost 13-year-olds. And the growth is tremendous. Last year for our summer league, which is usually our, our shorter league, we were at 150. I think we're going to hit 250 teams. That's not players, teams. So we're busting at the seams at the sports park. We're trying to accommodate this growth and it's a big challenge. The other thing we're doing, we got kudos about how well we maintain our sports park, but they want to see our fields here in Escarate at that same level. So Ben Vias, who's our maintenance manager, his team and him are working to improve our diamond fields. And I think if you take a drive around, you see they're looking better and better this season. Also, our focus this year is going to be on our flat fields. We've got soccer programs. We've got an incredibly large youth tackle and touch football program that a private organization runs here in the park. And any given Saturday morning, the park is just hopping with lots of activity.
¿Te gusta este pequeño parque aquí en Escarate Park?
Sí.
¡Sí! Bien, y entiendo que vamos a encontrar a tu mamá, ¿cierto? Y ella es importante en la ciudad, ¿no es cierto?
Sí.
¿La lleva mucho?
No todo el tiempo.
No todo el tiempo, ni siquiera lo suficiente, mamá. Hablaremos de eso. Ahora, si no has ido a Escarate Park en un rato, bueno, sé, muéstrame. Si no lo has hecho, hay un parque todo-inclusivo aquí para niños. Eso significa que los niños de todas las capacidades, cada gustos pueden venir y disfrutar fantásticamente. Creo que la mejor parte de este pequeño parque aquí es, por supuesto, que todo el equipo está nuevo. Y tiene balanzas, tiene cosas para subir, tiene cualquier cosa que haga ruido. ¡Vamos allá a continuación! Y creo que sabes de qué estoy hablando. No estoy seguro de lo que es eso ahí. Pero es mucho diversión, mucho diversión. He visto que también han cambiado Escarate Park mucho porque han añadido campos de béisbol. ¿Jugáis béisbol? ¿Quién juega béisbol?
Yo.
¿Diego lo hace? ¿Lucas, tú también?
Sí.
Bien, me encanta. Es mi deporte favorito en el mundo. Los niños cuando eran tu edad solían jugar también. Ahora, me están acompañando la mamá de esos dos niños adorable que acabas de ver, Desiree González. Encantada de verte.
Encantada de verte.
¡Wow! Es tan hermoso aquí.
Lo es.
¿Esto se pone lleno durante los fines de semana y cosas así?
Sí, ¿sabes qué? Especialmente ahora que está getting warmer y las noches son hermosas aquí.
Es tan... Y las mejoras solo están comenzando.
Sí.
Entiendo que vamos a ver algunos campos de pickleball.
Sí.
Bien, ¿dónde están tus hijos? Porque me gusta hacer ruido. Bien, ¿quieres tomar uno aquí? Vamos, vamos, Lucas, toma uno. No seas tonto, nunca... Oh, no es mío. Bien, continúa. ¿Estamos listos?
Quiero uno.
Bueno, no puedes tenerlos ambos. No puedes tenerlos ambos. Estos chicos locos hoy pensando que los tienen todos. Bien, no vayas a ninguna parte. Te quedas con KTSM 9 News.
Continúa.
Buenas tardes. El comisionado Court reconvenió una sesión regular abierta. Son 3:04 PM. Estamos en el artículo 14, sesión regular, 14A. Discúlpalo y tome medidas adecuadas respecto al acuerdo de empleo con John Ando, condado de El Paso y la autoridad de transitar del área de El Paso, LGC.
¿Vale alguna presentación o solo tenemos que ir adelante y hacer la motion?
Comisionados, pediríamos que el tribunal aprobara favorablemente el acuerdo de empleo con John Ando, el condado y la autoridad de transitar del área de El Paso.
Hago la motion. Tenemos una motion del comisionado Butler, una segunda del comisionado Holguen. El voto está abierto.
Voto aí.
Gracias, comisionada. El juez está ausente y la motion lleva.
Gracias.
Eso concluye todos los temas de la agenda de hoy. Esta reunión se detiene a 3:05 PM. Muchas gracias.